Give me a script.
Yeah, there was one email, but they said they were gonna have one.
They emailed me one.
Mayor, good evening. How are you?
Really good.
Excellent, thank you. Did I hear a reading from a script? Is there some sort of presentation night that we're involved in?
Just for the kids, for the presentation, we're gonna give them a, um, return their painting with a free, um...
Monk?
Yeah, what do you call it? Matt and framing.
Oh, nice.
Nice touch, very nice touch. Those are the thirteen that are highlighted this calendar that was...
Oh, wonderful. Sir, good evening. How are you?
Good.
Oh, very nice to meet you, sir. And your official title, sir?
Uh, Deputy Chief.
I prefer Deputy Chief Watson. Very good. Well, it's a pleasure meeting you. Thank you, sir.
Good to meet you, Sam. Thank you so much. Yeah. Yep.
How are you? Good. So you want me to hand what?
Joe. Um, Jim Jordan, he will not be here tonight speaking. You wanna cross him off?
And no one's got...
And nobody, so do you...
Yeah, yeah. I'm game for whatever. I did. It was good. I see someone's gonna speak about stuff. But yeah, it was great. Thank you for that. And the holiday parade was awesome. No, I don't wanna make it easy. Yeah.
I was there. Okay, and my grandson, our... And he walked, we walked back up to, um, we were parked by the dollar store.
Mm-hmm.
We walked back up there and then I was taking him home and we got out to about Rogersworth and... And he said, "Grady, you're being so quiet." And he goes, "Here's the DR." And he went... Two seconds after that, he started snoring.
He was ready for night-night. He's like, "I'm tired."
He walked all the way back to the car for which I was thankful because...
He was so cute. I'm sure he was tuckered out from waving and saying, "Oh," he was like, he was really good.
Yeah.
He was saying Merry Christmas to everybody. He was so cute.
Alrighty, folks. If I can get folks to begin to take their seats, we're gonna get started in just one minute. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Regular Meeting. Please prepare for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening to do the business of the city. Um, I just thank you for this evening, give us wisdom and insight beyond our own ability. And Father, just thank you for the great turnout and just the celebration of the calendar also this evening. Just pray that you'd be with us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Member Olson. Member Berantyne.
Present.
Member Cuesta.
Present.
Member Martinez.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Wink.
Present.
Mayor Jefferson.
Here.
Six present, one absent, the one absent being Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item Five. This is consideration of minutes of previous session. I would entertain a motion to approve 5A at this time.
I move to approve, uh, the minutes from last meeting, 5A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or changes? Councilmember Berantyne.
Um, I hope... It's kind of weird in the minutes because we had an attendee and then we didn't have an attendee, but I believe because we had two separate roll calls that it kind of almost makes it two separate meetings. So it's just something that I think that we need to address in the policies as we're moving forward if we continue with this. So with, with that being said, I think that there were actually two separate meetings because otherwise the charter would require permission to leave the meeting, regardless of how you're participating. So, but I think because there are two separate meetings that that may not be as much an issue. I just wanna bring it up as a point of clarification when we do discuss it.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I feel like the record was fairly clear. You know, it could have, I think, separated those minutes into two separate, but I appreciate the record. I think that's helpful for everybody's benefit. Any further comments? Councilmember Russell?
Um, actually, I, I do have a question. Um, I looked up, um, the definition of absent and it means not present. And, um, so I'm wondering if it would be more appropriate to put Councilmember Martinez participating via phone under absent because of the meaning of not present.
Yeah, um, you know, I think we heard from a majority of council that night prior during that long conversation regarding role that there was some suggestion that that member be counted as present. Um, you know, I'm open to a motion to modify if that's what you'd like to do at this time.
Um, I move to modify, um, that and change it to absent. I mean, I don't know how else to do it because she wasn't physically here. So I move that we change it to absent but participated via phone.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this? Councilmember Berantyne.
Um, I, I second motions and I've, and I've seconded motions that whether I agree with them or not because I think what's the most important thing is that we have discussion and that the information is being, is happening in front of the, um, public. Um, I really think that, uh, we need to bring that up as an issue as we're following through in the future. So I, I won't be voting for that. I think that the time and energy and effort to go into it at this point is, is not worthwhile. I think to note that there's, um, a concern with it is important and I believe that that's already happened, but I don't think any further on this. So I, I won't be voting for it, but I do appreciate that the issue's been brought up.
Okay, in, in that case, I appreciate that and I will withdraw my motion, but I do believe that we should address this, um, again.
Thank you. Uh, with no further comment, please vote on 5A.
All votes been cast. Let the record show. Six ayes.
Okay, I'll move us on to, uh, Agenda Item Six. This is recognition of scheduled public comment. Uh, tonight under 6A, we have a very special student art calendar recognition. Um, I'd like to welcome everybody and thank everyone who's here, uh, for the calendar artist recognition tonight. Um, during the first part of tonight's meeting, we'll be recognizing the students whose artwork is featured in the 2018 Inglewood calendar. Uh, we're so pleased to see so many of you here, uh, to help us honor these talented local artists. I think it's one of the most important things we do as a community is to provide opportunity for some of our local youth and to recognize them when they actually achieve some of those opportunities. And that's what we're here, I think, doing, celebrating, uh, tonight. A little background on our annual calendar. Uh, each year, the City of Inglewood produces a calendar that showcases Inglewood's talented student artists. To help choose the artwork that is included in the calendar, we hold an art contest that is open to all students who live or go to, uh, school in Inglewood. The artwork is voted on by council members, members of the Cultural Arts Commission, and members of the Inglewood Arts Community at large. The 2017 calendar features the top thirteen pieces from this year's student art contest. Um, I, I would like to, uh, welcome some of our, um, guests in the audience. Uh, I'd like to recognize some of our school board members. Uh, we have school board president Tina Prang uh, in the back, Kevin Ebert, Sharon Sheminsky, Jen Hubbard, and Katie Husbands, I believe, or at least most are present. Uh, please stand if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, please.
Thank you for being here tonight. Also have our superintendent of Inglewood Schools, Dr. Wendy Rubin. Uh, Dr. Wendy, please stand. Uh, I'd also like to recognize, uh, some teachers. And so as I call your name, if you're present, if you wouldn't mind standing, we could applaud all of our, uh, great Inglewood art teachers, uh, here at the end. Uh, the first one I have is Katie Ornall, art teacher at Bishop Elementary. I have Mary Lynn Baird, a teacher at Clayton Elementary. Uh, Kate Delaney, Delaney, uh, art teacher at Charles Hay World School. Welcome. Katie Primo, art teacher at Cherry Lynn Elementary. Ryan Talbot, art teacher at All Souls. Emily Winthrop, art teacher at Inglewood High. Kim Young, art teacher at Colorado's Finest. And then we also have some school administrator, administrators I would also like to recognize. Uh, we have Ryan West, the principal at Inglewood High. Shannon Martin, uh, principal at Bishop Elementary. And I know some of these folks are unable to, uh, join us tonight, but I did wanna recognize Ryan Cowell, principal at Charles Hay. Dr. Bobby Skaggs, principal at Colorado's Finest. Jenny Buster, principal at Clayton. Eva Passowicz, uh, I'm sorry, I'm probably butchering that, principal at Cherry Lynn. And Tracy Aricon, principal at All Souls. Thank you all for being here and for supporting our, uh, local students. Now, let's get on to our student recognition. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Amy Martinez to help me with the presentation. Uh, prior, uh, to her recent election to City Council, Amy served on the, uh, Inglewood Cultural Arts Commission for several years. Had been a longtime supporter of the calendar project. Uh, I'd also like to invite Communications Manager Allison Carney to the podium to help with our presentation. Um, Councilmember Martinez, if you'll join me in front of the dais, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for the great turnout tonight. Before we go further, I'd also like to recognize and thank our sponsors who help support this calendar, Museum of Outdoor Arts, the Inglewood Cultural Arts Commission, and Framed Art, which, uh, does a great job matting and framing all the artwork that we returned this evening. So when I call the, uh, student artist's name, please come on up and get your artwork back from the mayor and Councilmember Martinez. Xavier Webb, a third grader at Charles Hay. Senior Fox.
Could you go ahead and give his... Do, do you give the month and what they're, and the school that they're from?
I don't, I don't, oh, the, yeah, he's on the cover. He made the cover. Okay.
Ooh. That's why all the photography's on.
Chris Wosner, an eleventh grader at Inglewood High School. The art of creation and destruction. January. Justice Patton, a fifth grader at Clayton Elementary. The new color, February. Chloe Bennett, a fifth grader at Charles Hay. Creativity, March. April is Elliot Engler, a ninth grader at Colorado's Finest. Winter Lee Link, an eleventh grader at Colorado's Finest. Pink ruffles is May. Gianna Martinez, an eleventh grader at Colorado's Finest. Mother nature. Brianna Cheatham, a tenth grader at Inglewood High School. Butterfly boy is July. Lonnie Medina, an eleventh grader at Colorado's Finest. Petals was August. Ephraim Leal Jr., a third grader at Clayton. Leaf. Taya Collins, a third grader at Clayton. Self-portrait. November is Tyler Venancia, an eleventh grader at Colorado's Finest. Space theory. And December is Gillian Nudston, a third grader at Charles Hay. Winter birds.
Don't worry, Mom. The mayor's gotta stand there as long as you wanna take pictures.
So thank you all for coming to this evening. We had a great turnout and we would like to remind you to grab a bunch of calendars on your way out. There's cookies and calendars. Feel free to help yourself. We have plenty of both.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you all.
And there goes everybody.
You guys want a group photo?
Yeah. Yeah, they're all, sure, if you want to.
You know, folks, if we could get some of the award winners to come back up with the council, we'd love to do a group photo with the council and the winners. If we could get, um, all the folks to come up who, uh, were awarded tonight, we'd appreciate it, just for a quick photo. Council, I'm just gonna give the minute for the room to clear here.
I, I appreciate it. That definitely will work.
Part of the prize is staying for the council meeting. Did nobody tie? Really? Bye, T. Thanks. Okay, Kevin, nice. Go to one of their meetings now. I'm in the room. Yeah, I know. Very nice. Congratulations. Bye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
This little brother. His sister was so proud of him.
Okay. I'd like to move us on to our next agenda item. This is 6B. Uh, we have Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding being present. Good evening, Mrs. Bailey. And on deck is Doug Cohn.
Good evening, council members. It is not our honor or privilege to stand before any of you that sit at that dais because of our vote. It is our responsibility. So it is, however, your honor and your privilege to be sitting before the citizens at that dais and it is your responsibility to serve the citizens honorably. Last council meeting, it was beyond ironic to have the council members Olson and Martinez via phone and the members that the citizens had just voted to remove, Gillette Yates, sit up at that dais just prior to the transition to the newly voted in members. And by challenging the meaning of being present, they coordinated one last self-serving power play and discarded a time-honored city council rule that stood in their way and voted for a historical change. How is that even remotely respectful of the citizens who had just voted to remove Gillette Yates as their representatives? To use Gillette Yates to make this historical change? Is that to being present in your sworn position to serve the Inglewood citizens? These are the same members who, in response to my question as to why they refused to require sufficient knowledge to apply knowledgeable governing oversight of their staff, these majority members actually proudly and steadfastly declared, "It is not our job. We trust staff to do it. This is all over our heads. We only deal with mundane things like rates." Is that being present in your sworn positions to serve Inglewood citizens? These are the same members who, even after Inglewood was issued a client, uh, compliance advisory on 4416 by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, due to the failure to comply with state law by our city managers and utility directors, and instead of firing and replacing them, these majority members simply parroted what those responsible for that gross negligence told them to say. The sludge is just dirt and no more dangerous than living in a brick home. Even as our safe sludge was being hauled off to the state's only hazardous and radioactive approval landfill, is that being present in your sworn position to serve Inglewood citizens? Just last year, a fourth Allen Water Forest Plant cancer victim died. And what was the first priority for you, majority members Olson, Martinez, Gillette, and Yates in 2017? A failed coup attempt you blindsided Mayor Jefferson with during the January seventeenth, 2017 public city council meeting with your goal to insert, insert Gillette as mayor and you, Mayor, uh, uh, Member Olson, as mayor pro tem. Is that being present in your sworn position to serve Inglewood citizens? Then just last council meeting, you say, majority members Olson and Martinez via phone, Gillette Yates, and sadly with the support of Mayor Jefferson, by simply challenging the meaning of being present, you voted to replace the city council's own time-honored rule that voting member govern, go, that voting governing members attend and be physically present to face and respond to the citizens that come before the dais, to face and respond to the department staff that present items before this dais for consideration of a vote and to face the public as they vote every two years for a new mayor and mayor pro tem. And these majority members proudly replaced that time-honored rule with a new rule, the right to be considered present to vote via telephone from anywhere, including a cruise ship. Is that being present in your sworn position to serve the Inglewood citizens? This action wasn't a noble action taken on behalf of the Inglewood citizens. These majority members took this action simply because that time-honored rule was suddenly an inconvenient barrier for their desire to exert a majority vote for the new mayor and mayor pro tem. Is that being present in your sworn position to serve the Inglewood citizens? Only because of a failed transmission line, that first vote from a cruise ship ultimately failed, ultimately allowing the successful nomination and the successful vote for one of the two of what I refer to as the minority members as our new mayor pro tem, Rita Russell, making the citizens that members Russell and Berantyne represent very happy. I believe that the Inglewood citizens deserve a governing council that serves the citizens, not the members' personal goals, who provide responsible, knowledgeable governing oversight and will respect all laws, regulations, and rules and demand the same from their city managers and utility directors and will hold accountable any city manager or utility director who fails to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing now, I'll thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Our next speaker is Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident, addressing council regarding Inglewood's history. And on deck is Brenda Hoop.
Good evening, council. I wanna start by saying thank you. You guys really know how to put on a parade and a party. With the, um, the city and the Chamber of Commerce and Allison and Slate. Um, a really fun event on Saturday. I wanna pitch a out-of-the-box idea to you tonight. I've talked about the Inglewood Speedway racetrack three times in the last couple of years. of years. I've talked about the Codner family. The racetrack was there for a generation from 1947 to 1979. Thousands of people went every weekend to watch the races. On Facebook, 2,800 people still follow the Inglewood Speedway and it's been closed for 39 years. I've talked about the auto-related businesses along South Broadway and how many of them got starts as thousands of people every single Friday and Saturday drove down Broadway to get to the racetrack. There's a lot of people who like race cars, a lot who like car racing. Got a call this morning from the new owners of the Sherwood Business Park. That's where the racetrack was and they're interested in doing something to make a tribute to the racetrack. That's the preamble. Here's the out-of-the-box idea. Furniture Row Racing just won the national NASCAR championship. The first time a team from west of the Mississippi has won that. NASCAR supporters want to have a parade to celebrate the championship of the Furniture Row team. They went to the city of Denver and Denver said no. My question, would you, the council and the staff, entertain the idea of having a parade for TruX and the championship team here in Inglewood? Nothing has been discussed with the racing team. Nothing has been discussed so far with the ownership group. Nothing has been discussed with Furniture Row. No contacts have been made at all. There's just a group of people who are saying, "Wouldn't it be kind of fun to, if Denver doesn't want to do it, maybe we should do it here?" I don't have any idea how it might be put together. I don't know where or when. The fans of the Inglewood Speedway and I have exchanged some thoughts. Wouldn't it be cool if Inglewood would host the parade? My instinct is we could get a whole lot of people to come to Inglewood that day. There's no guarantee that even if we made an offer, that they even consider the offer seriously. It's just an outside-of-the-box idea. What do you think?
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Our next speaker is, we are skipping over Jim Jordan, an Inglewood resident who was here, who was going to address counsel regarding censorship. However, Mr. Jordan is not here this evening, so we'll move on to 6E, which is Brenda Hubka, an Inglewood resident, will address counsel. And then on deck is Elaine Holtz. Good evening.
Evening. It's Brenda Hubka, but that's okay.
Sorry about that, Ms. Hubka.
Everyone chops up that. Good evening. I feel it was kismet I got here on calendar night. Thank you. Anyway, I'm a resident of 17 years and my family kind of goes back here. I work for Verizon right now and I'm wanting to address the council with a question about zoning and code enforcement. And I don't have to get that answer tonight, but I've written some of you an email and I've been following up on this for about five years. And that, it is a, in regards to a nuisance in my neighborhood and that nuisance is a roll-off dumpster. And so I am addressing Eric Keck and the police department tonight too because I've taken it up with code enforcement for a long time. In this instance, the resident is literally across the street from code enforcement. They can see it too. And this resident is in the business of cleaning out HUD homes or foreclosed places and taking all of that junk and then bringing it back to his house. And he puts some of it in his house. He formally put it in the backyard and he also puts it in a roll-off dumpster that's been out there for about three years, really on and off five years the entire time he's there. But most permanently, it remains there all year long and then just maybe a couple, three weeks out of the year, he takes it out and dumps it back. Now, code enforcement, through my needling, and did get all the junk off his property in the backyard, TVs, mattresses, tires. I've got pictures. They're awful. And they did a good job of getting him to clean that up. So we, he took most of it inside and then told everyone he was moving so that that, we thought that was going to be resolved. And of course, the dumpster stayed because we thought he was going to take stuff out. But on Friday, I saw him take three full-size refrigerators into the house and realized he's not moving. So I did contact code enforcement again and they are not going to, and I asked them if they would please get him to move the roll-off off the residential property in the front yard. And they said that the city does not have a municipal ordinance pertaining to the dumpster and that no action can be taken by code enforcement because he is actively working to fill the dumpster with items that he has accumulated inside the home and frequently has it dumped or moved. Well, that's true. He has it from items inside the home that he has brought in the course of his business. But putting that aside, he still has this dumpster out there all of the time, next door to a woman, a single mother who's raising a three-year-old girl. And I did look up code. So I am zoned, just for the record, M U R 3B. You're allowed temporary mobile storage with or without a building permit, but no industrial service, light, salvage, or recycling. He is doing those things and it is light office only. Now, I think the municipal code does not spell out about a mobile storage. It only says this under temporary accessory uses. Temporary accessory uses shall be governed by the standards and temporary use permit procedures set forth in section blah, blah, blah. Now, he told me once he had a permit because it's not like I'm not talking to him, but I don't think he does. Now, in regards to that, under capital, small letter A, it says applicability. Temporary use for mobile storage containers sealed, contained, mini mobile storage for the purpose of temporary storage of goods and materials. Temporary use for mobile storage containers shall not apply to roll-off trash collection containers. So that's what code enforcement is doing, is they're reading the law their way, they're interpreting it that way, or this did go to a judge. And that's what I wanted to find out because to me, it seems like a judge would decide if we're to interpret the law literally or if that's not the intention of this law. It's not to say you can, you have to abide by temporary storage constructions, containers, unless it's a roll-off and then you can just leave it there all you want. So that's what I need to find out and we would like to see the coroner unit be not a nuisance. And I, therein lies a subjective term also, but I would say anyone, everyone in the neighborhood agrees that this is a nuisance. Any questions?
Thank you. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. Councilmember Berentine.
I know that several of the emails that she sent were sent both to the mayor pro tem who sits on the-
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Preserving.
And also to the city manager. And I have the same question as well. So I would like it to be a council request rather than, I would never want anybody to opine on anybody's particular property in a public meeting in this setting. And I know you're very respectful about that as well. But I would like to get an update on exactly what's happened and if there has been other actions taken as Ms. Hubka-
Thank you.
-has shared with us as well some of the emails that were sent to councilmember Jefferson. I'm not sure, in the former mayor pen. So I know that this might have some history. So if you could take just a little bit of time to update all of council on exactly what's going on with this and then maybe councilmember Russell can take it to code as well and we can wrap ourselves around it a little without discussing this particular case publicly right now. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Hubka tonight? Seeing none, thank you for coming and speaking tonight.
Thank you.
Move us on to our next speaker, which is Elaine Holtz, an Inglewood resident, will address counsel. And on deck is Carolyn Marshall. Good evening.
Good evening. Joe, did you say, I thought I heard you say something dismissing that previous situation. Maybe I heard wrong. I hope I did. Anyway, Elaine Holtz at 3350 South Lincoln Street. You know, although I wasn't trained as a teacher, I have taught. I've taught at grammar school level. I've taught at high school level and I've taught at college level and in my expertise areas. I'm kind of getting tired of being a teacher here because we're all supposed to be adults. But the dictionary that I prefer to use is Webster's Collegiate. I think that's one of the most accurate dictionaries you can use. But I also, before I get into that part of it, I want to say this to you. I think it should be a requirement that everybody who sits in city council or even anybody who wants to be on city council should be required to read the entire charter of the city of Inglewood. And in their particular area, and that includes boards, and in their particular area should have some expertise of what the rules and regulations are. Because we have so many infractions that take up all of our time, that make people leave the meetings because they don't want to stay there until 10, 11 o'clock at night. So I would make that suggestion. I think you ought to take that seriously. And the larger words that they cannot comprehend, you can use a thesaurus. It will give you a very accurate example of how to use that word and phrase. And therefore, I think that should be required reading also. But to commence with what I came to say this evening, there are legal aspects that perhaps you need to know, but there are also aspects that are a variable. I call them a variable. It's not written in stone, however, it can be over time and it's called a precedent. And certain things do evolve because they happen to be more convenient, because they serve a purpose, and these are added as actions. They're not written into the exact wording of the Constitution, but over a period of time, since the same habits had been repeated, they now become precedents. And we can rely on precedents because they're tried and proved over a period of time. But I also want to go into a simple word called present. And according to the Webster's Collegiate Dictionary, present means being at a specific place or being in attendance. That's what present means. So if a person is not in a specific place for a specific purpose, they are not present, which means they are absent. According to our charter, in order to vote or to set a motion, you must be present. So I think that should clarify that. I'm really a little bit annoyed because there are many people, I believe, that would come to city council and listen to what they need to listen to, which is the action of their government, but they don't do it because this is what I hear. It's a waste of my time. They pick on the small little things and the big issues are ignored and throwing little ringers in here and there. Haven't you learned anything that happened this last election? And even happened when we had the fiasco over the status of our mayor, Joe Jefferson. Hasn't it sunk in? I mean, what is it going to take for you to realize that before you try some of these little ventures outside of the Constitution? Do your homework. Make sure that you're on a solid footing because I guarantee you, you won't be there very long. Trust me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me see if we have any questions for you this evening. Seeing none, I'll thank you for speaking tonight. Our next and final scheduled public comment is Carolyn Marshall will address counsel regarding ADUs. Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you. Carolyn Marshall, 4367 South Clarkson Street. I'm here tonight because I will probably not be able to attend this study session you've rescheduled to January. I am not in favor of ADUs, but especially if we have to have them, I believe that ADU should be required to be a single-story. I live on South Clarkson between Quincy and Radcliffe. For blocks around me, there are primarily small, single-story homes on small lots. A two-story ADU would be like a sentry tower, broadcasting noise and light into neighboring yards and invading privacy. While there are landscaping requirements, no landscaping will reach a second story. And if the ADU had a balcony or deck, the problems would be compounded. Please come drive up my street and look at all the second-story homes, or single-story homes. Now, imagine ADUs as envisioned by the planning staff stuck up behind these houses. It would look ridiculous. Now imagine one with a window left open and a large dog inside barking all day or a balcony that is just ideal for parties or a tenant who is a drummer in a heavy metal rock band that practices at his house twice a week from 10 to midnight. Sounds ridiculous, but that was my neighbor for three years. And if you decide then to allow short-term rentals in ADUs, we will end up with little motel sixes in our backyards. I looked at ADU regulations for cities across the country and I have a list of questions and suggestions for my research. I brought my list to the ADU open house. That open house was a sham. There was no opportunity for any thoughtful discussion. I was told to just check boxes on the questionnaire. Staff member agreed to let me email my comments the next day. I got a polite thank you in reply and was told then that the planning staff had no plans to review any of the suggestions that they received at the open house or to make any revisions to the proposed regulations. So what was the purpose of the open house? They are leaving any changes to you, the council. So I brought you my list. I'd like to think you can rely on staff to guide you, but sadly, I don't think that's the case. I attended a planning commission study session on short-term rentals in September. If what I observed at that meeting was any indication, then I doubt that due diligence has been done on ADUs either. First, at that meeting, staff said they don't want ADUs and short-term rentals discussed at the same time. I wondered why. Then the staff posed a few vague questions and presented no background information or research. The discussion wandered from supposition to conjecture to ill-informed opinion, including a statement that short-term rentals could solve Inglewood's hotel problem. Now you see why I'm worried about those hotel sixes. The discussion ended with some very lively bashing of city council and complaints about the way that council does business. Not professional and certainly not due diligence. So when you have your study session on ADUs, I hope that you will ask for a lot of background information on how other cities have implemented such policies. I hope you will question everything they tell you. I hope you will think about what our neighborhoods really look like. I hope you will use my list of suggestions and that you will require regulations that protect the quality of neighborhoods and rights of existing citizens of Inglewood and not allow carriage house ADUs. And for the sake of transparency, I also ask that staff and planning commission members submit disclosures detailing their place of residence, whether or not they plan to build an ADU and rent it, including short-term rentals, and if they have family or close associates who have such plans. Probably I should ask council. ADUs are a current city planning trend, but we all know that trends come and go and economies go up and down. Be careful not to create new problems by poorly implementing ADUs in a way that will destroy neighborhoods and make them undesirable in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Let me see if council has any questions for you this evening. I do see a few. Councilmember Russell.
Yes, thank you for coming to present. And do you have the list? Did you give it to the city clerk for us or? Perfect. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
I would be more than happy to serve on any kind of committee that would address design issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa.
Yes, Ms. Marshall, what was the cross street on Clarkson?
Between Quincy and Radcliffe.
Thank you. And I look forward to reading that list as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Berentine.
That's District 3.
Understood.
Just in case you want to know where we're at there. District 4 guy. The, what planning and zoning meeting were you referring to?
It was in September. I'm sorry, I don't have the date in my head. I can get that for you.
They've canceled a lot of meetings. I can probably figure out which one it is.
I was told by a commission member that there would be more discussion, but they have canceled every meeting since then.
Noticed. And it'll be brought up under council member choice as well. And did you- And did you, are you able to forward to council? I know she asked if you had the list of things, but could you just forward the email that you sent to the staff to council, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall, I also have a question. Thank you again for coming and speaking this evening. Are you in R1 Zone District there? Do you know?
Yes.
You know, then...
I defer.
We'll talk on Friday.
Do you think there might be other areas of town that make sense where ADUs might not have the same level of issues as on your block? Or do you think that, are you against allowing ADUs citywide?
Intuitively, for me, it would make more sense to put ADUs in larger lots because those areas would tolerate the increased density. I mean, there's a reason why when people have the choice, they move to places that have bigger lots, because they don't want to live in such a dense area. So when you increase the density so much, and you have people looking into your bedroom window because they're in a second-story ADU, that makes for an unpleasant living environment.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate you coming and speaking this evening. I'll move us on then to item, Agenda Item 7. This is recognition of unscheduled public comment. We have nobody signed up this evening, so I'll move us on to council response to public comment. Would any council member like to kick us off on council response? I do have a few responses. I just wanted to thank everyone for coming and speaking this evening, in particular, our student artists. Really great to see that recognition happen, providing opportunities for some of our youth accomplishment, of course, acknowledging it when those accomplishments happen. Ms. Bailey, thank you for coming and speaking this evening. As you're aware, we're not commenting on the Allen Water issue. I do appreciate your comments regarding the change in policy regarding phone-ins. I do think that this council has discussed that this is something we need to, this slippery-slope issue, we probably need to make some decisions on very quickly. At our meeting, I believe our next meeting here in December, we're going to be getting to broach some of those policy, both policy and procedures, guide, and looking through some of the recommendations from our city attorney's office to try to make sure that we know what the rules are moving forward. Mr. Cohen, thank you for speaking. I also wanted to second your thoughts. Saturday's Holiday Parade and Christmas tree lighting was a home run for us. You know, again, it's events like this that create a sense of community here in Inglewood, particularly around the holiday season. It's great to have that sense of togetherness here in our community. I'm so happy that that event went really well. You know, I'm happy for Furniture Row's championship, and, you know, who knows? We're open to some events. I will tell you, I believe former Mayor Randy Penn might have had some sort of relationship with that team, if I'm not mistaken. And so maybe the chamber might be a good spot to sort of brainstorm on what might be possible Ms. Hubka, thank you for coming and speaking tonight. I appreciate Councilmember Berentine's sort of council request. Hopefully, we can get some response. City Manager Keck, will you be responding directly to Ms. Hubka at some point here to make sure that we continue to get some clarity on some of these questions she has?
Yes, Ms. Hubka and I have been in conversation via email, but we'll continue to look at this particular matter. It's not as cut and dried as one would think, but I certainly agree that it's an issue that needs to be dealt with, and we're doing so.
Mrs. Holtz, thank you for speaking tonight. You know, I think most of your comments were regarded to the same sort of attendance policy, and I promise you, we will be getting to that very soon. Mrs. Marshall, thank you for coming and speaking, and I do look forward to the council, this council's discussion of ADUs and short-term rentals, with ADUs perhaps coming soon. Councilmember Berentine?
Councilmember Questa was...
Sure. Would you like to defer to Councilmember Questa? Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Congratulations to all the students. That was tremendous, tremendous work, and certainly to staff for putting that together. Frame the Art for putting all those into frames, making them look gorgeous and very, very presentable. So very well done. Kathleen, thank you so much. I think there was a lot of truth in what you said there. Mr. Cohen, I would go for Parade every weekend, so I'm absolutely on board if we can get it here in town. Ms. Hubka, thank you. Certainly appreciate it as well. Elaine, always good hearing from you, and I think that there's definitely some lingering issues that we need to sort out regarding what exactly is present, and it's a worthwhile discussion. It was rather hasty the last meeting, and so that certainly needs to be addressed again. It sounds like that's going to happen sooner than later. And Ms. Marshall, thank you for the insight on the ADUs. I'm really looking forward to reading your points, and I do leave District Four from time to time. I understand you're in District Three, but I get over there here and there. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
Again, congratulations to all of the art winners. I had an opportunity to talk to some of them before the presentation, and very, very creative and talented people. We're very fortunate to have them in our community, and we have a beautiful calendar for this year. Ms. Bailey, this is one of the few times I can actually comment on anything you've said because I don't think that currently, right now, we're in a lawsuit about the word "present." Not yet, anyway. But I do appreciate some of the comments that you made. On a more serious note, very disappointed with some of the rhetoric that's gone on for this council to kind of poke at each other from an article that was in the paper. Nobody on this council expects that just because they're in the majority, that they're part of some club that can go ahead and bypass the law. I don't think that that's what the intent was at the time, nor is it the intent of anybody on this council, including myself, to ever bring up the charter, or the rules, or process and procedure because I like or don't like somebody because they vote with me or don't vote with me, has nothing to do with it. It is, and anybody who knows me, is that I am firm, even when it comes to myself, on making sure that we follow process, procedures, and policies. I am not always 100% perfect on it either, but I do try. And my intent of bringing it up is never a personal issue or any kind of displeasure with the majority-voting block that usually I am faced with. That's just not in my makeup. And I was very disappointed in the article implying that there was some other motive for me. There isn't. I follow the charter. That's what I want this council to do. And my only objective going into council two years ago was that we follow the law because I would think that we would be better, we will do a better job, and the city will benefit from it. Ms. Hubka, I'm telling you, unfortunately, you are not the only one dealing with this. And so the city manager is correct, is that apparently, and I am confused by it, that we need to actually delve into that we don't put dumpsters or trash cans on public right-aways in front yards, and the fact that we're having to deal with this on more than one location is somewhat disturbing. So hopefully, if you have time, I have a coffee on District Three Coffee this Friday, as I do a couple of times a month, if you can attend that. But I will be in touch with you as well as dealing with the issue so that maybe we can have a bigger policy discussion since it's become a bigger... Whoever thought that putting a dumpster or your trash constantly on your sidewalk would be something that needed to be a policy issue, but it has become that way? So I do apologize for that, but it is a little bit bigger issue that we need to deal with. And that's... Oh, and the ADUs as well. I do look forward to, I do think it would be a good idea for us to put some kind of panel together to try and get through some of the information. I did send out some of the information for my, the link to the information. I wish it was a little bit more predominant on our website, and I believe I brought that up at the last meeting. I hope that the city does that. But I did provide a link, and we'll do another posting just on that issue so that people know that there's been some material put together from that very well-attended open house, and that maybe that leans into more of a discussion, like you said, the expectation that there would be more of a, an opportunity for there, to be more of a town hall kind of thing on that. And it certainly doesn't stop me, as a councilperson, from wanting to make sure that some activity like that happens, since it's just a tremendous amount of issue on both sides, and you have a lot of people that would like to see this happen. But there's a lot of questions on both sides that need to be answered. So thank you very much for bringing that up. And everybody, you don't have to live in District Three to come to my coffee, but if you have time at 11:30 and you're around Duffy Roll, come join us.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I just want to touch base on my telephone participation the last business meeting. I just want to give a little bit of background on why I was out that week for my family moon. A lot of us up here on council have multiple responsibilities outside of our council responsibilities. Some of us have families, some of us have primary jobs. I have both, and my main reason for choosing that week was to make sure my stepdaughter did not miss very much school and that we were able, my husband and I were able to take off work from our primary job. So that's why I was out that particular week. I did want to participate in the meeting and was equally as frustrated as everyone else when my service was lost. Our ship was supposed to stay in the same location for two days, so I assumed that when we tested it and everything worked out, that the signal would remain consistent. However, at some point, the ship started moving and we lost connection. I tried to call back, didn't go through, went and asked, and the ship could not maintain its position throughout the evening, so it had to move around. So that's why that happened. But just want to make sure that everybody knows that I am 100% committed to this council, and I appreciate the discussion we are having around the telephone participation. Look forward to our policy and procedures discussion coming up, and I'm looking forward to pressing my own buttons this evening. And also with the student art calendar, it is one of my favorite projects to be a part of. I love watching the students get honored in such a way for their creativity. And want to just extend a huge thank you to all the educators and our staff who make that a reality for these kids. It's a really big deal when they get there to take their framed pieces of art home. It's really exciting for them. Also, Mr. Cohen, I don't know if you saw, but you are in the art calendar under the Year in Review, so you'll have to check out your picture there. So just a great, great project. I love being a part of that. Also, the Holiday Parade this weekend was amazing. Thank you to staff for doing such a great job. It was an awesome turnout, and we had a really good time. That's it for me.
Thank you. I'll now move us on to Agenda Item 8. This is Communications, Proclamations, and Appointments. Under 8A, we have a proclamation declaring November 13th through 19th, 2017 Traffic Incident Response Week. I entertain a motion on 8A at this time to approve?
I move that we approve the proclamation declaring November 13th through 19th Traffic Incident Response Week.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. With no further comments, we will vote. I'll read the proclamation of the record after the vote here.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Six ayes.
Six ayes.
Thank you. The proclamation reads, "Declaring support for first responders to traffic crashes and incidents within our communities, region, and state, and urging the public to drive safely, adhere to traffic laws, and respect the lives of responders who safeguard those at the scene of a crash. Whereas first responders include law enforcement, fire, rescue, medical, towing, and other frontline personnel, and... Whereas, recent fatalities among first responders in the Denver region have raised public awareness of the danger to which first responders at a traffic or crash incident scene are subjected while safeguarding the well-being of others. And whereas, at the direction of Governor Hinkenluber, the Colorado State Patrol recently convened a task force to review first responder safety and has launched its "One Scene, One Culture Saves Lives" campaign. And whereas, the Federal Highway Administration, its partners and responders are making the Second Annual Traffic Incident Response Week, November 13th to the 19th. And whereas, annual roadway facilities in the Denver region increased by 40% between 2014 and 2016. And whereas, many of the region's residents will soon travel between communities and states for holiday visits to relatives and friends using roadways they don't frequently travel and encountering unpredictable weather, further highlighting the importance of traffic safety and the role of first responders. Now, therefore, I, Joe Jefferson, Mayor of the city of Inglewood, Colorado, hereby recognize Traffic Incident Response Week from November 13th to the 19th through 2017 in the city of Inglewood, Colorado, and I urge all Inglewood residents to support efforts of the people who work as first responders. Thank you for that. Is anybody here to collect this proclamation? Will make sure this gets to the appropriate body. I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 9. This is our Consent Agenda Items. We do have one item under 9C1. I entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 9C1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda Items? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Six ayes.
I'd like to move us on to Agenda Item 10, Public Hearing Items. Nothing there tonight, so I'll move us on to Agenda Item 11. This is Ordinance, Resolutions, and Motions. Under 11C, Resolutions and Motions, we have 11C1. Broken Tea Golf Course Restaurant Concession Air Contract Renewal. Staff recommends council approve by motion the renewal of the Broken Tea Golf Course Restaurant Concession Air Agreement between the city of Inglewood and Western Golf Hospitality LLC, formerly Broken Tea Grill LLC. Our staff sources Recreation Services Manager of Golf Course Operations, Bob Spada. Good evening, Manager Spada.
Good evening, council. How are you tonight?
Excellent. Any presentation? We'll turn it over to you for any presentation before council questions.
Okay. Briefly, you just mentioned that that's what we're trying to do here, is approve the renewal of the Golf Course Restaurant Concession Agreement with Western Golf Hospitality, formerly known as Broken Tea Grill. They have been operating the restaurant since 2012 and have done a fantastic job. Our guest services have tremendously increased, the food quality, the food consistency have tremendously increased. They provide an experience and professional niche in a very difficult golf restaurant environment, which is a golf course. The lease payments will be $36,000 a year paid to the city or to the golf course, and the concession will also pay the first $3,500 of repairs to kitchen equipment. At that, I ask if you have any questions.
Questions from city council this time? Councilmember Questa?
Good evening, Mr. Spada. I'm going to ask you for a brief history lesson on these concessions. So prior to Western Golf Hospitality LLC, they were known as Broken Tea Grill LLC. Those were two separate companies, or they just changed the corporate entity?
Changed to corporate.
Understood. So has that always been run by a third party?
Yes, since I've been here, yes.
And the reason I bring that up is a few weeks ago, it came out possibly outsourcing some other services that are performed at Broken Tea, and there seemed to be, people weren't especially happy with that proposal. But just so that I'm clear, that did go back to staff for further consideration. And the only reason I bring that up, it seems like we're doing okay with concessions, and I was wondering if the idea was still being explored at looking at other services as well.
Yes. The Parks and Rec Commission will be addressing the issues with the Parks and Rec Commission after the first of the year.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
Good question. That's exactly what I had a concern about, is if, it wasn't clear to me that it was off the table about what was going on with, you know, outsourcing the management piece of it. So how this would affect if we're doing these kind of contracts. So I'd like to get at least an update. If it's off the table, then it's off the table, and we can kind of move forward. I was just confused.
Yeah, if you had a question specific for somebody, I think what we heard is it might come back after the end of the year based on the recommendation for Parks and Rec.
I can only say he's still my question, so I still had to kind of...
If it's determined that they will still continue to go out with an RFP down the road, there is in the clause in here that's 90 days termination of the contract without cause with the restaurant concession air.
And thank you very much, Councilmember Questa, for bringing that up.
Thank you. With no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve 11C1.
I move to approve 11C1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote.
Can I clarify who the second was made by?
Mayor Protom.
Great, thank you.
Okay, please vote, please.
All right. All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Six ayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to 11C2. This is the Inglewood Employee Association Collective Bargaining Agreement Approval. City of Inglewood Home Rule Charter stipulates that the city council approve by motion the collective bargaining agreement between the Inglewood Employee Association and the city of Inglewood. Our staff source is our city manager, Eric Keck. Manager Keck?
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. This particular item is coming forth at an unusual time. Per the charter, Section 15, which basically discusses how collective bargaining should transpire, normally, an agreement such as this would been brought forth probably in the June-July timeframe. But as the... But as the, those of you who are more seasoned on the council, aside from the new folks, may have recalled, the city and its negotiations with the Inglewood Employees Association stalled and went to impasse within the timeframe of the negotiations that were discussed. Largely, the impasse resulted from disagreements on, with respect to compensation and how the union members sought to be compensated through the performance system that we have. And as such, again, that went into impasse, and through the Charter and the Charter requirements, the City Council did approve an arbitrator to sit and listen to both sides of the arbitration. And per the Charter, it's very clear again in this language within the Charter itself, through impasse procedures, the resulting determination of the arbitrator was binding with the city. Unless the city believed there was something legally flawed in the analysis itself, then that could have gone to district court. However, that was not the case. The findings of the arbitrator were final, and they decided to fall in the camp of the Inglewood Employees Association. As indicated within the council communication that I provided to you, you had the findings from the arbitrator, as well as within that document, obviously, if you read through that, it's very long, and I can't apologize for it, that's just it was a two-day hearing, you should have been able to obtain the flavor for, again, the nature of the impasse. The fact of the matter is, here this evening, the council is required to adopt this finding and approve this agreement as found by the arbitrator. From a fiscal impact standpoint, the difference between what the city had proposed, as well as what the Inglewood Employees Association proposed, was about $100,000 in difference. And so going into the 2018 budget, staff recognized that there could have been, the arbitrator could have selected the union's proposal. And as such, we budgeted the additional roughly $100,000 to accommodate that, rather than trying to come back in 2018 and asking for a supplemental appropriation for that funding. And so from a fiscal standpoint, the city will be able to manage this particular difference as it's been stipulated by the arbitrator himself. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions relating to collective bargaining. It is a different subject that this council has wrestled with in the past and will continue to do so. For example, in 2018, we will be, as a city, required to enter into negotiations with the Inglewood Police Benefits Association for their next agreement. And again, as the Charter stipulates, those agreements are anywhere from a timeframe of one year up to three years, no more than three years in length and term. And so we'll be doing some more of that. What is not clear from the Charter, and the mayor and I have had some discussions about this, and Mayor Protem participated in that as well, again, in how the council really interacts during collective bargaining. And that, from reading through Section 15 of the Charter multiple times, as well as in conference with the city attorney, we need to develop a policy going forward in which the council can participate in such discussions and in negotiations. But again, the Charter is pretty clear on who negotiates. It says the city, and the city is defined as me and/or my designee. And again, we just reached impasse this past time with the Inglewood Employees Association, but that's obviously not the goal. Obviously, we want to have harmonious relationships with our employees while at the same time ensuring fiscal prudence with respect to the resources that were provided by the public in the fiduciary nature of our roles as management of the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have relating to this matter.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mr. Keck. So there really is no choice but a yes vote here, if I'm understanding correctly, but it does need the confirmation of council. That is why it's being brought before us, even though there really is no choice.
That's correct. Again, the Charter is very clear, specifically in Section 15, again, 137-6, and if you look in 137-6 subsection, let's see here, HI, Finality of the Arbitrator's Decision, subsection one says, except as provided in this section, the decision of the arbitrator shall be final and binding on the employee organization in the city. Nothing herein shall prohibit the parties from agreeing to terms different from the decision of the arbitrator, as long as such agreements are made within the 15 days after receipt of the arbitrator's decision. We did not seek that.
And so we knew that going in, of course. So we were prepared for a worst-case scenario. It sounds like this landed in a place where everybody is happy enough with it.
Yes, sir.
But we were prepared for a worst-case scenario as well, where we would just bite the bullet.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Secondly, and this might be more a question for the HR Director, but something that jumped out at me. In a prior life, I was a state employee, and we received, I believe, 10 days off a year, and I checked that out again. I think it was 10 while I was there as well. It's currently 10. Denver gets 10. Arapaho County and Littleton were at 11, and I see we're at 12. Is there any particular reason that we go 12 days a year? Certainly, staff works tremendously hard, and I'm glad we're generous to staff. My only thought there was, and I had a constituent point this out to me recently, that they want this to be a desirable place to work, and it is tough with the job market being the way it is and employees being tough to come by. Employees tough to come by. Is there something else that we would, is there something else that we'd be making up for that we're having now, the extra days of PTO?
Now, that's a good point, and you mentioned PTO. We're currently not on a paid time-off system.
Excuse me, excuse me, holidays.
Yeah.
And I understood that in there, but thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I appreciate the distinction. Thank you.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. We are in a very competitive market. We're facing 2.3% unemployment still in this region, and where we are geographically, we're potentially, as is pointed out even by the arbitrator through his analysis, our market for employees is the same as Denver's and much larger cities who are more capable of providing additional opportunities and pay that we simply can't. But we feel that we do provide an excellent work environment as well as benefits. The holidays, actually, if I went back and did my own research, they have, that's increased over time, again, to accommodate various groups. A lot of the services that we provide are required to be provided 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And I think the members of the Employees Association over time acknowledge that, and as you will probably see when you see the EPBA, the Police Benefits Association Agreement, you know, they have different means of addressing holiday pay because they don't really get holidays. They do through seniority, but most of those folks are required to work the holidays, and these extra days, we're accommodating those persons, again, that work in the field such as Public Works or Utilities, who are required to work every day to provide a little bit of additional time. And that is somewhat of a competitive advantage for us.
Thank you, and I certainly appreciate those essential services and truly staff as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brandon.
For the record and for the public in attendance, could you give an understanding of what you believe the differences were?
Yes, certainly.
Where the city was and what you believe the impasse was? Some of that's in this material here.
Yes.
But I'd just like, for the record, if you could please go ahead and put a little synopsis to it.
Certainly, council member. Again, the negotiations began in May of 2017. In both parties, the Inglewood Employees Association and management sat down and discussed what points were needed to be made. So there were really three key issues that were at heart. For the union, they enunciated that they desired a system of one to five. So if you get a rating of five, you get 5% increase. Herefore, what has been done under the old practice was, if you got a rating of five, you would get 1% less, you'd get a four. And again, I can't describe how that arrived because I wasn't here during that time. The union desired a more simplistic formula, and they sought to seek that one-through-five rating. If I get a 3.7 as my rating, I should get a 3.7% increase. And again, heretofore, it was 2.7 if you got a 3.7 in your review. Additionally, the city desired to move to a PTO system, a paid time-off system. Right now, as it stands, there is personal leave, which each employee gets 48 hours a year. So that's six days of essentially leave that you could utilize for whatever personal issue you had. There's annual leave, which is vacation to most people. There's funeral leave, there's administrative leave, there's a number of different leaves. And we wanted to just take all those different buckets and put them into one bucket and say, here's your time to utilize. The Inglewood Police Benefits Association desired to go to PTO, and we're currently in the process of working that out with them. We also wanted to move the general population of employees, and this particular group is roughly 230 employees, I think, that are within the Inglewood Employees Association, to also move to a PTO system. They rejected that with their final proposal. Third issue that was a sticking point for both parties was the interpretation of a benefit that the city offers referred to as short-term disability or STD. Short-term disability has been utilized in ways in which we don't believe are appropriate. So right now, the policy has been, the first day that you need to go on leave for any medical issue or a qualifying event is supposed to be personal leave and your annual leave. But what was happening was several employees were using it to have three and four and five-day weekends. And that, you know, is something that if you read the report from the arbitrator, the arbitrator said, that's not something that really should have been negotiated. The city basically has the ability to enforce the rules for short-term disability, but we proposed a new system inasmuch that each year, especially last year, I believe in 2016, short-term disability costs the City of Inglewood and its residents $250,000. That's quite a bit of money for a benefit like that. And we certainly want to offer different types of liability to people, but again, it's insurance, it's not an entitlement. And so trying to change the culture and the interpretation of how it's been utilized in the past became a problem, and that was one of the sticking points. But ultimately, council member, to come all the way back around, what it boiled down to was compensation, and specifically the compensation system of wanting that rating of one, two, three, four, or five and getting actually that percentage direct correspondence.
And then my second question would be, and I think you kind of touched on this a little because you want to make sure, I'm dismayed as you are, that when you have a situation like this happen that affects the budget, that happens after the passing of the budget, is an issue. And so I think that you're trying to address some issues to try to make sure that if there is an impasse, that those things can happen in a more timely manner so that decisions can be made that can be incorporated in, or at least considered into the budget in case it's significant enough that other decisions might need to be made before that budget is changed. So I think you've touched on some of them. Do you think you've had an opportunity to vet that enough, just because I also want that on the record?
Yes, I believe so, and you're absolutely right. One of the things that is difficult, the Charter's language and the dates are pretty, they're firm, very firm, and we've been following those specifically. But what happens is, and again, if we could go back in a time machine and change the way this Charter is written and how those dates are, we'd make it correspond maybe a little earlier than the budget process, because what happens is the train starts moving down the track with respect to the budget, and you have the lag of the negotiations going on, and they don't seem to coincide, and it puts us in a really difficult position to have to take some steps back or, you know, bring an agreement forward. And if things go to impasse, all bets are off, if you will, with respect to the timing of which to professionally and adequately deal with both the CBA or the collective bargaining as well as the budget process itself.
So you'll be coming forward, and we'll be discussing how we can handle that in the future?
Yes, and right now, we're trying to figure out some sort of policy in which we can engage the council more, even though, again, it's not written in that way in the Charter. But I do agree that this particular piece is a fiduciary policy responsibility of the council to make those decisions, even though you're relying upon staff to negotiate these types of agreements. It is what it is. Some would call it an anachronism, but we believe in treating everybody fairly, and that's what we've been trying to do. But we will continue to work to bring forth some sort of timing and a policy on how to engage the council wherever we can and in whatever way is possible, while at the same time preserving the way in which this is written for us to negotiate so that the public can understand what's going on as well, rather than coming to a meeting in December and saying, hey, we have to adopt this agreement.
Thank you very much. That was all the questions I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell.
One of the questions that I have is, were the evaluations already done on these people before it went to impasse? So in other words, if they got a five, they're getting a 5% raise?
Yes.
And is there any way for the city, I mean, really, last year we were talking about the fiscal cliff all along. Is there any way for the city to defend that we just don't have the money to do that when that happens? I'm not saying right now, but...
Sure. No, there certainly is, and as you probably read in the arbitrator's report, he looked at CAFERS, he looked at our comprehensive annual financial report, he looked at our bond rating, he looked at all this particular data and said, surely, city, you are capable of paying them this. Why are you begrudgingly not trying to give them an additional $100,000?
So we're not going off the fiscal cliff?
Well, and again, one of the things that we really have to be conscious of is, we have to quit looking at things in a snapshot in time, and that's right now. We look and we see that we have these great reserves, which we do.
Right.
But as you well know, one cataclysmic fiscal event could potentially drain those reserves quite quickly. And as we've talked again before, and we'll talk in great detail, I think, moving forward, the same pot of money that pays for our operations is the same pot of money that we utilize for our capital projects. And we cannot defer capital projects, and I hate to say this, and employees are watching, they watch everything and listen to everything that I say, we cannot have a system in which we expect that we defer capital projects to continue with operations and pay our employees. Services are important, but so is the infrastructure that we have. And conversely, we cannot not do a capital project to make sure that we're paying our employees. So it goes both ways. We have to figure out some sort of system to deal with both. But you're absolutely correct. If in fact, we did, were to get into a situation where we're facing a dire fiscal consequence, we need to come together and come up with a plan off of the shelf or out of a drawer that says, if X happens, then Y. And that's something that we have to work collaboratively with our unions to ensure that we have that in place. The one thing that I want to avoid, and this is what collective bargaining does, it's the nature of it, it's the nature of the beast, it's the WIFIM model, what's in it for me. And rightfully, I understand that, I'm not begrudging the fact that we have that, but it basically creates two camps, us and them. And we have to understand that our paychecks all say the City of Inglewood, doesn't say Inglewood Employees Association, Inglewood Police Benefits, City Council, says City of Inglewood. It's the same pot of money, and we have to be very conscious and cognizant of being a good fiduciary for our public, as well as ensuring that we've taken a long-term view rather than just one year at a time.
Right. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You entertain a motion to approve 11C2?
I move to approve 11C2.
I'll second.
Thank you. Did have a comment. I just wanted to thank the city manager, as well as our union reps for their efforts in which is really an important deal for us here in the City of Inglewood. You know, I do think the city council, you know, the council, future council, this council needs to probably make a decision about how much we want to be involved. I, you know, in the past felt that we'd been overly involved and micromanaging the negotiation, and this year I felt like we weren't involved enough in that process. You know, that being said, I really appreciate that, you know, in this situation, unfortunately, we went to impasse, but I think the good news is the impasse was small and that the compensation package truly reflects that we value our employees here in the City of Inglewood. We know we're in a competitive market. We know we have to offer competitive, if not better, benefits to stay the employer of choice that we truly want to be. And so I'm glad we're taking care of our people who work so hard to advance our community forward every day. Any further comments on this? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Six ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on to 11C3. This is a resolution for 2017 Budget Reappropriation for Security. Staff recommend city council approve a resolution for reappropriation to the 2017 budget for city security needs. Our staff sources Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel. Director Rinkel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. So tonight, we're to look at the transfer, basically, of the funds that you appropriated, or the supplemental funds that you approved for an appropriation in 2017 for the security features in this building and the rec center. We did do some infrastructure work around electrical and notification systems, but no actual money was spent out of the funds that you supplied for us. We'd like, the need is still there, and we'd like to move this money into the Capital Project Fund, out of the General Fund, so that it's there for 2018 when we're going to look at doing the work.
Thank you. Questions from city council? Councilmember Russell.
Actually, why did we not do these projects this year?
We did get some infrastructure work, the actual detail on the work. I am going to punt the question to our...
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question. That's a fair assessment, because we've been dealing with this, obviously, since the end of March, early April. And as Director Rinkel enunciated, there was significant work that needed to be done in order to put the infrastructure in place, and these... And these, some of these things were planned, such as pulling enough CAT 6 cable, category 6 cable, in the building to accommodate the automatic door locks, openers, closers. Not to mention the difficult nature of trying to find either the appropriate vendors for some of the things we wanted to implement, such as the turnstiles that prevent people from going into an area that they shouldn't. Some of them, quite frankly, were very, it's just too draconian, if you will. We, again, we want to have a facility that people feel comfortable coming to while at the same time providing for safety, and it's taken us quite some time to find the appropriate vendors for this equipment. Public Works has finally done so, and I think we're prepared and have received quotes back for this equipment that could be implemented in 2018. But again, the pre-work was very important to have done, and we pulled a lot of cable. We put in, as part of this year's budget anyway, was to improve the communication system. We've been working to replace our telephonic systems, as well as put intercoms in the ceiling, wherein we didn't have that before, and that was part of the budget for this year, too. But this amount of money is going to help us with the physical barriers, as well as the cutoff switch, where if we go into a lockdown situation within the building, that equipment has to be home run back to the dispatch center at the police building. And so, we've had to do a lot of coordination, and it's just taken a lot of time to get vendors to come together.
Okay, so, we have spent some money, right? And that's on the infrastructure?
Correct. Yes. Roughly, and talking to Mr. Henderson earlier today, we've spent roughly about $140,000, but that, a lot of that money was pre-engineered before this money was talked about to do some of the infrastructure. But it works, it will work for these barricades, as well as the door systems that we're going to be installing.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentan?
You rightly point out here, the city manager rightly points out, or you wrote this, so you point out that this was a decision that was made by the previous city council in some executive sessions. And I am a little concerned about having new members, you know, being, you know, asked to vote on something when not all of the information is there. And at some point, we need to make sure that it's caught up so that they know that what's brought forward either matches or doesn't match what the expectations were at the time, because I think there was some additional personnel there, as well as some security measures that were being taken. So, I wanted to address that, that at some point, we need to make sure that we are being brought together again to discuss this. And if you still believe that it needs to be done in an executive session...
Yes.
...to kind of bring them up, I don't know how we do that, but as these are going forward, they need to make sure that this whole council understands what we're doing with the money and what that agreement was, and that we're still on the same page. The other is, where is this, you say where you want to put the money, was, since we made a decision to go ahead and do this, we didn't have this in place for 2017. Where did the $340,000 come from that you're now wanting to put into the capital improvement?
Yes, and on the very last page of this section, you'll see the original resolution.
Right.
This is a portion of the total money that was approved. It was approved out of general fund.
Just out of the general fund?
The reserve, the fund, yeah.
Where out of the general fund, again?
Out of the reserve.
Right, okay. And then, yeah, that answered enough of my question. Thank you very much. I would like to have the update for the personnel portion of this as well, that I don't think kind of is getting it...
You mean the police security portion?
Well, I think that discussion will happen, because I believe that we had a little bit of disconnect in the budgeting piece of it from what we kind of might have decided at the exact session. So, we might just want to revisit that again, as the security as a whole thing, once we get this done. I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Yeah, I think just for the council's benefit, I do agree that ultimately, a security/emergency protocol type of executive session would be happening with this new body. And if council, new council members, I suppose, had some questions that were more, you know, in line with what we're doing, sort of behind the scenes, you know, it may be appropriate, I suppose, to have that discussion prior to voting on this, if new members felt uncomfortable. But just wanted to provide that level of guidance for this discussion. Councilmember Russell?
And that was my question, do we want to table this until we can have an executive session?
Point of information, I think the concern is, this is your last functional business meeting for this year. If this year expires, the money would go back to the general fund, unassigned fund balance. So, we were trying to come before the end of the year in order to have you move the money now for this express purpose of security, only for security, again, at the facilities that were indicated, enunciated, library, civic center. So, if, in fact, you didn't take action tonight, that $340,000 would go back to the unassigned fund balance. It wouldn't go, it wouldn't be able to be reused again, we'd have to come back again in 2018 and ask for another supplemental appropriation. Certainly, if that's the direction of the council, and you had a willingness to, again, to fund that, we would, we could do that. But just understand, that's the mechanics of what would happen here.
So, we could actually do that, it would go back into the unassigned fund balance, and then even the first meeting in January, or whenever, we could reappropriate the money out of the unassigned fund balance at that time?
In theory, that is correct, yes. That would, again, require a, you know, resolution just as you passed back on, in June.
Anything else, Councilmember Russell?
Not right now.
Councilmember Berentan?
I have to admit for this, that I really want the 2017 decision, discussion, the concerns and why we did this, to stay in 2017. I do not disagree with trying to appropriate these funds and keeping them in the period of time where I believe they actually belong. I would, to Mayor Jefferson's point, probably defer more to the newer people on council, our newer council members, if there is anything that they feel that uncomfortable about, because quite honestly, the money isn't going to be spent before we have an opportunity to have a little bit more robust conversation. But I would rather that, for accounting sake, I'll sympathize with you on this one, that I would like the money to stay where it was decided and kind of appropriated for that. I don't disagree with that portion of it. So, I would, I will vote yes on it, but I would like to hear from the newer members, whether they're comfortable or not, and I would defer to them if they're not.
And Mayor, just...
Can we get another bite of this apple?
Another point of information, Mayor, and that is, the one reason that staff would lobby against having it go back to the unassigned fund balance, we have engaged professionals who are helping with this, and they're helping us right now to get to the point where we can do the construction. So, if we disengaged and said, well, hold on, we have to wait until we adopt another resolution, contractors right now are difficult to come by, and even including security. And so, we would be concerned, we would lose them, and they've already spent some time and effort to help us to get to the point where we're ready for that. So, kind of goes along with what Councilmember Berentan has just enunciated.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa?
I'm prepared to move forward on the matter tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
I'm also prepared to move forward tonight. I read the packet thoroughly, and I also feel that the decision to move to a vote tonight is in the best interest of the city, and probably benefits the city more so than postponing, although I'm looking forward to a more robust conversation with more detail in the coming weeks.
Thank you. That being said, I entertain a motion to approve 11C3.
Move to approve 11C3.
Sarah Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item? Councilmember Berentan?
As always, I appreciate that we are concerned about the finances here, but I'm also very concerned about moving forward and this council, the previous council's concern about issues that happen and security issues that happen here, and we want to make sure that our city, our employees, and our citizens that come to city center are safe. So, I do appreciate the movement on that, and I'm looking forward to us having a better discussion on it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Let's move on to 11C4. This is the proposed 2018 fee and rate changes. Staff is recommending council approve a resolution to increase permit fees, land subdivision and development fees, zoning fees, retail marijuana tax rate, and other miscellaneous fees. Our staff sources Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel. Director Rinkel.
Thank you. So, with this resolution, we're requesting 30 of our rates and fees be increased, and that's 30 out of 327, so about 10%, 9.2. And what we've done is looked at the fees, reviewed them, and we had the directors who are actually involved with these fees, take a look at time of materials, what are the other cities doing, and compare it. Now, also, I'd like to point out that these fees were recommended with the budget proposal that you all approved in October, and built into our revenue stream. So, with that, we've got an attachment, actually, well, it looks like two attachments in your packet. One is actually part of the resolution, the other one is a little more informational, with the actual fees themselves highlighted in yellow where they change. So, these fees are expected to bring in about $271,000 across the 30. And with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Questions from council? Councilmember Costa?
Good evening, Ms. Rinkel. Thank you for putting this together. I appreciate that the comparative analysis was done with other municipalities, but I didn't see it disclosed what those municipalities were. Do you know who we compared ourselves against?
It may be different for each rate, if you have a specific rate. I have the directors here who put them together that can speak to it.
We might end up getting to that, sure. So, it clearly wasn't just by a percentage, you know, there were some things that went up 400%, and there were a few things that went up 10% to 15%. Also, how was that typically determined?
Again, rate comparisons, so that you missed municipalities, and I can bring the directors up, and they can share which municipalities they compared to, or it'll be time of materials as to what's actually being spent in motion-type studies. So, I can tell you that from the marijuana standpoint, that was based on the initiative wording, and there's a 3.5% increase after the first of the year. Actually, even though this document says January 1st, it's actually January 2nd on that one rate.
So, for instance, there's the admin subdivision found on page 2. Prior to that was $100, it's proposed to be $400. So, we got so far behind on either the cost that it takes to administer that, that it went up 400%, or everybody else is just charging more, and we want to jump up to that comparably with our neighboring municipalities.
Okay, and I will ask our director, Brad Power of Community Development, to come up and...
Good evening, Mr. Power.
List him.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. That's a little bit of both. So, we looked at what other communities are doing, we compared our fees in community development, development across the cities of Arvada, Brune Field, Lakewood, Littleton, Wheat Ridge, Lafayette, and Sheridan. And I need to provide a little bit of a disclaimer, because a lot of the fees are not apples-to-apples comparisons. There are other cities that charge fees that we don't, and they do things differently in terms of their land use, that they charge maybe hourly rates, flat fees, or a percentage, even hourly rates for their employees. So, it's very difficult to make complete apples-to-apples comparison. But as it related to the administrative subdivision fees, there are two reasons why we made that decision. One, we just looked at some of the other areas. Brune Field is 250, Littleton is $375, plus additional dollars, $100 if it's additional work that was being required, Wheat Ridge is at 300, and Sheridan's at 200. But the other thing that we did is, we looked at how our staff is spending our time right now. And one of the things that we're doing is, we're processing a lot of administrative service, administrative subdivision applications, and so, that's requiring additional time of our staff. And based on the fact that we don't see that slowing down, at least in the near future, that's one of the reasons why we propose the increase the way it's structured.
Thank you. In Houston, is this survey conducted, that you guys do this comparative analysis?
So, when I arrived last year, we, about three months into my tenure, I asked for us to kind of look at across the board. So, I can't speak to it any time before then. What you can see in your council communication is, some of these fees haven't been raised in quite some time.
Sure.
And that was one of the motivations to take a look at some of these other cities for comparison data.
So, this isn't scheduled at a regular frequency, be it annually, biannually, whatever the case may be, this just happens?
It hasn't been, but it's our plan to do it, at least biannually.
Excellent, okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentan?
For exactly what just happened, I had a problem with this kind of wholesale approach to doing this. I think it's very difficult to address my constituents in just doing this wholesale raising without really a conversation with council. So, I kind of found it, at least in my paper packet, kind of very difficult to follow along. I mean, if we are wanting to make you get up, I'm not interested in trying to make each person get up and try to justify why they did it, because then it becomes very anecdotal, and then after I pass it, I'm unable to kind of go back on that. Could you explain that, Director Powers, could you please, just, what I was trying to get him to do was, the specific example he brought up, could you just show me where that is on, I think he was trying to show it to me, and then I can understand your explanation a little bit more. I have the sheet, I believe, he had in front of me. If you could just kind of point it out, so that I know which...
Mr. Power, I'm seeing it on the bottom of page, or it's on page, excuse me. I believe it's page 2, the particular fee that we were just discussing, that went from 100 to 400.
Point of information in your packet, if you electronically looking at it, it's 22 of 31 under this particular item.
What is 4? This one here? This one here? So, on this, on this page alone, this one, there's a lot. And so, I don't think that anybody could have garnered that kind of information that Councilmember Costa was asking from this, that we got provided. And some of them are a lot, is there, you said that it wasn't quite an apples-to-apples. How did you make that determination? Not on a very specific issue, but did you really take them fee by fee, and then decided, well, we're way different than some other community in that area, so we're, you, I'm a little...
So, we did a combination, as I said earlier, of two things. We did look at comparison cities. And we looked at the fees that could be made a one-to-one comparison, and we charted those, and we kind of made a professional decision about, okay, where do we fit in relation to the metro area and that particular fee. But also importantly is, where are we spending our time now? Because under the theory is that we want to recapture as much of our time out of our fee generation as possible, that's one of the other things that we looked at. So, we looked at how our work has shifted since 2000 as it relates to building fees, and 2011 as it relates to most of the other fees. And so, the administrative subdivision was a perfect example to bring up, in terms of the volume of the workload in that one particular area, our staff is devoting more and more time to it, based on the market demand for that particular type of application.
And how many of the ones for community development fees were reduced?
We haven't reduced any fees.
Pardon?
We're not proposing to reduce any fees.
Okay. Because one of the questions that did come up on some of the technology issues that we've done, some of the programs that we've put in place, is where is the efficiencies of some of the, some of the money we've spent to create some of those systems? And that's all the questions that I had, that's fine.
You, Councilmember Russell? Councilmember, Mayor Protime Russell?
Sorry. I guess one of the questions that I have, just because I went through this within the last month, is the one on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. It says, one of them, zoning variance and adjustment and appeals applications, administrative adjustment is 150. Then what is the difference between zoning variance, adjustment, and appeals applications? Appeal, $300.
So, the variance, there can be administrative variances, but then the ones that go to appeal go to the Board of Appeals.
So, did you increase that, actually, you doubled it? Is that right, for the ones that go to appeal?
That's correct. And again, that's based on the amount of staff time that's required to prepare those types of items for the board commission review versus the administrative review that happens.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I have a question similar to Mayor Protime Russell's, but for the Public Works Department? Hello, thank you. So, there's two that say, Public Works and Written Requests and Encroachment Agreement. One is administrative, and one is city council. So, I have two questions. What... What are the difference between those two things? First?
First, administratively, we do it without your approval, and we have to bring one to you, but the difference is, we grant administratively encroachments that could be removed. If it's something like a piece of a building that encroaches over the right-of-way, which we have seen a couple of times, we bring those to you, because they're basically, you can't revoke them without demoing the building.
Got it. Okay, and then my question relates to the fee increases. There, um, there's a note in here that they were last updated in two-thousand-and-fifteen. Do you remember what the fee increases were at that time? Two-thousand-and-fifteen, that was, I guess, two years ago?
Well, I remember a few of them. I don't have that. I do know that a standard permit for concrete or excavation at that time was ninety-five dollars, and it went to one-fifteen. And this, this time, we're going from one-fifteen to one-seventy-five.
As a point of information, I do recall what this was, because when I first arrived here, in many instances, the city wasn't charging a permit fee for items. And so, specifically for the administrative encroachment, you just got a permit. I don't think you paid anything.
That, that may have been the case.
So, my mantra, and I've heard it very clearly from several of you on council, is new development should pay its fair share and pay its way. And again, staff has been charged with going out and determining what the true costs of doing business are, and then again, doubling that with making sure that you compare to surrounding entities what they're charging for their comparable work, if you can do it as best they can. And I think both Director Power and Director Henderson have done a good job with making that analysis.
Yeah, great, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I was just not sure, because it said it was updated in two-thousand-and-fifteen, so it seemed like a big jump, but that makes sense if we started from nothing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Yes, Mr. Power, thank you, and I certainly appreciate the approach on cost analysis. Those things that are going to take the most time and resources of city staff should be feed appropriately. Uh, and I have a larger question, and I guess it's more towards the philosophy on these, where we're structuring these pricing, and it might be for you, Mr. Kacker, it might be for you, Ms. Rankle. Are we looking to just cover our costs of what it takes to administer these services, or are we looking to make a profit from these?
Uh, we're not looking to make a profit. We are in, trying to stay in par with the other organizations around us, the surrounding areas, as well as recapture our costs where we can. Now, not all of these will recapture all of our costs.
I would be really curious to know, and you guys may or may not have this, what the actual cost of these is. So I see what we're, um, charging for the fee, but what does it cost to administer these? That would be the interesting number for me, is what does it actually cost to administer, and then what are we charging our citizens for them? Is that an available, uh, financial document?
I don't have that, but I'm sure the directors who put these together do in the background. Did they bring them today? I don't know.
I would like to comment on the, I believe it's ten items that Public Works is changing. That's based on our costs, the best we can identify it. We tracked admin time, inspection time, and review time. We also compared with other cities, but what we'll end up using is what it costs us to provide the service and no more.
Thank you. Uh, so if we're just looking at our costs, what does it matter what other cities are charging?
I, I think we needed to look at other cities, because we, first off, how you define how much it costs, there's a number of ways to calculate that. So we did want to review and make sure that it seemed reasonable. And I, I'll give you one example. For someone to do a fifty-foot of concrete in the city of Denver, the permit's over six-hundred dollars. For us, it's about two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars. And at Littleton, it's, I think, a little under two-hundred. So they're all over the place, and I'm not saying Denver's wrong, but they must calculate it different than we do, or they have a lot more overhead than we have.
Perhaps just to supplement that answer, I think the, the main goal with fees is to, you know, potentially recapture up to a hundred percent. I don't think we get anywhere near that, and I think the intent of looking at other jurisdictions is to, uh, take a look at the marketplace and determine, even if, you know, we don't want to get, if we can't get near recouping our costs, how much can we without impeding development or economic activity generally, is probably the question, if that's helpful at all.
I'm still not seeing how the outward look defines what our costs are. Whatever Denver is charging should not impact what, what it costs us. I, I feel to see that connection.
Some additional light to that. I think that you're absolutely right. Our costs are what our costs are, but one of the things that's very important to me, as an organization that's trying to do continuous improvement, I come from a manufacturing background, and you can say your costs are what they are, but if you don't look at the market, and specifically, cities never do this, they never look at competition. Uh, we're sadly mistaken if you think there's no competition among cities. And so, what I try to challenge my department directors to do is to make sure that, is the method and the way in which you do your work, is it the only way that can be done? Are there better ways? What does Denver do? What do benchmarks of best practices of communities do across the nation? So that we can begin to learn and be a continuous learning and continuous improvement to do a better job with respect to how we do things. Mr. Wolf, heretofore, who's been in the role of strategy and innovation, has used some simple exercises to help with that. Process management, laying out processes and procedures, and then figuring out if we need to follow each of them, and if there are necessary steps. And so, when we go and we look at what other entities are doing and what they're charging, that's an important thing. It's not just, hey, what do you charge? But how do you do it? How do you calculate your fee? How many people does it take to plow the snow off your sidewalks? These are the types of things that lead us to be a better organization and provide a better service to our constituents and businesses.
Sure. And I absolutely appreciate that competitive advantage. That can come from that appropriate, um, price structuring, especially when it comes to fees. But that's what I'm wondering about, is are we just pricing to our costs or under, as you've described in some cases? Are we ever going over our costs? Which I think in those cases, we could potentially lose that competitive advantage. Again, I do appreciate the insight there, and, um, any further background that would be available on exactly what it costs us first, we're, uh, charging to citizens, just for my own FYI, would be appreciated.
Sure. No, I think it's a fair question, uh, Member Questa, and I think that the one thing that I want to enunciate too is that, for many departments, this is the first time they've looked at this. Because again, I know it sounds funny, but, uh, for municipalities, the, the typical answer is, this is the way we've always done it, and this is the fee that we have always charged. And we're beginning to ask ourselves to become more sophisticated and start to rely more upon data and understand, what, why do we do what we do, first of all, but how do we do it, and what are we charging to do it, and what are the actual costs? When we moved from simple line-item budgeting to now, um, priority-based budgeting or budgeting for community goals, we now have some data we never had before, and that is, what are the costs of these individual programs and services that we provide? And now that we have that data, we're starting to compare ourselves to other communities that utilize that same fundamental methodology to do a better job. And, and again, it's been mind-altering for some of our employees to start thinking about how much time they spend doing a particular activity, or what they do and how they do it. Uh, but we're beginning to capture more of that data, and as, as we get that and become more sophisticated, we certainly would love to be able to provide that to you and the citizens as well, to see that, you know, their money is going for what it should.
Thank you. And I do appreciate, again, the outward look at the landscape of how other folks are doing it. And I think we can sell ourselves in Inglewood, if we can show that we are a better place to do business, we are friendlier to, uh, those who are operating here. Uh, so thanks again to city staff on that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Russell?
Um, actually, I have a question. I mean, and this is more regarding utilities mostly, um, not necessarily wastewater treatment plant, because I think the wastewater treatment plant are all, um, probably more industrial charges or industrial fees. Are any of these fees in the utility department for, like, the individual household? Like, I guess my question is, um, are our water and sewer bills going to go up as a result of the fees in this document?
As you can see from this particular document, the utility fees, none of them are increasing. However, they are analyzed as well for cost appropriateness, as well as how much time they're spent. However, unlike the city fees that you're talking about this evening, public works, community development, um, building fees, the utility fees are actually set differently and actually require you to vote in a different manner. We couldn't bring that forth in a, a fee, fee schedule, as you see this evening, thank you, looking for the right word there. So we didn't put them, while we showed you what they are, those are actually adopted, I believe, I think some of them have been set by ordinance in the past, and so it requires an ordinance to change it, whereas tonight, you're, you're doing a resolution to adopt a fee schedule. I will further enunciate that. Prior to coming here, the city never did, did this type of analysis. You never had all the fees in one place. They would just be approved and moved forward. We're bringing these forward out of transparency for the council, as well as the community, to see where the fees are in one document and one way of doing this. Um, it's something that I've had as a practice before in other cities, and I think it's a wise move to have fees in, in a, in a manner in which they're brought forward for the council to approve. Having said that, again, I think we want to become more sophisticated and actually bring that forward at the same time as we do the budget, so that you don't have this gap of time between the budget and this. So, again, largely, these fees are, are, are driving the revenue that would be obtained in the two-thousand-and-eighteen budget. But again, we feel like this was a, a, a good opportunity to bring these forward so that the council can see that, as well as the community, and, and begin to put the, put that tie together that, uh, you know, they should be in, in one document.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. And then I just, I have one other question, and perhaps you can answer this for me. I pulled out the August fourteenth packet, and, um, under the general fund in community development, it shows, um, eighty-thousand dollars, Public Works forty-thousand, and Parks and Rec ninety-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-ten, which comes out to two-hundred-fourteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-ten, which is less than the two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand dollars under the financial implications.
The Parks and Rec's fees are not included in here, and that's because they're not set by resolution, they're just set by cost of service. So what you do see in here is the difference is the hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, and that's our estimate of the marijuana, retail marijuana tax increase.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You have any questions from council? Councilmember Berentha, more questions?
Well, I'm done, I'm, I'm waiting my buttons pushed for after we're done with questions.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve eleven C four?
I would like to make a motion to go ahead and table this.
Thank you.
And, um, I am very appreciative of what staff has done. Um, I appreciate that the fees are all in one place, and I appreciate that it's been said time and time again tonight, that this is the first time that this has happened. This is the first time the staff is going through this. This is, um, that we would have liked to have done it during the budget, and the, um, piece for the budget that was done on August fourteenth, uh, the council agreed that we would go ahead and look at doing some additional fees that would kind of make up for some of the money. But what hasn't happened is actually the council then having a discussion, all of this kind of work happened, and I really would like to have some additional time to hear from each one of the departments, since we do have the time, the budget's already passed away, we do have the time, um, to go through this, rather than do this as a wholesale, um, uh, passage without having had that conversation. And I really appreciate the work that the city manager has done in putting this together. But like you said, you did it for the first time, and now we're just gonna, like, here it is, pass it. That doesn't give, um, me an opportunity to really understand it well enough to speak to my constituency on it, um, and that's my reasoning for making the motion to table this, to allow the staff the opportunity to bring the information that they've worked so hard on to council, so that everybody can understand and council can weigh in on whether they agree in these fees or not, the decisions that have been made. I can't pass that responsibility just off to staff, I want to have that information. So that's my motion.
Second?
Further discussion on the motion to table? I assume, um, Councilmember Berentha, no date specific here?
Well, I, I mean, I, I do want to get this going. I do believe that there was some understanding that we would do some analysis of the fees and what we wanted to charge, um, where we would make some changes. But Councilmember Questa brings up a really good point. Um, he brings up a good point. Fees, by law, I don't believe we're, we are allowed to make money. We're, I mean, but a lot of the public sees fees as a tax, as a way of us going around it, and so I want to be able to make sure that I explain that. I'm not sure how much time the staff would need, because they seem to be already very prepared and well-versed on the analysis they did, why they did them, what's going on. So maybe we wouldn't have to have that long out, because they seem to be very prepared. What I feel is that I would love to garner that information that they've worked so hard on. So if they think it would be kind of up to them, if they think they could kind of bring this back in a timely manner so that everybody can feel comfortable and council can weigh in on whether they agree with certain ones or not, because I am very uncomfortable doing it wholesale, it might be kind of up to the staff. If you think we can do it right away in January, I'm, I'm all for that, but it's kind of up to them.
It is your...
I hate to, I hate to put them on the spot, but I mean, they seem like really prepared. I'm very impressed with the way that staff is presented tonight, but, um, I don't want to put them on the, on the spot. So at this time, I'll just, um, I would prefer not to do it to a time certain, because I, I really am hesitant to put the staff on the spot if some, if the city manager could make a suggestion for me. And you see my face getting red?
Yeah, I'm looking at dates, uh, trying to see when that might transpire. Uh, so, the eleventh of December is fairly full. Actually, it's probably capacity already.
Yeah, I think we're looking at the second, or the second meeting in January.
It's a shame, because we didn't have a study session tonight, if I, if we could have maybe scheduled something. Yeah, so maybe there's another time when...
Again, you know, my thought is, if you want to just put in a date for discussion purposes, if this issue were to come up and we weren't ready, you could table to another date certain, well, of course...
Sure, then, I, I'll do it to January sixteenth.
Thank you.
Because we're just gonna live here on the sixteenth anyway, so we might as well just...
There you go. So we got a first and a second.
But if it's not ready...
Table to a date uncertain of January sixteenth. Further discussion on that, you know, before maybe, Councilmember Questa, I would like to interject just a couple of comments, like...
And you'll have to, pardon me, yet another rookie question. So there are thirty fee changes of the three-hundred-and-twenty-seven fees we have in the city of Inglewood. If we were to have voted on that tonight, can we amend that on the spot and say, we want to, uh, not vote on these three, but we'll keep these twenty-seven? Is that something we can typically do here at the table?
Yes.
That was more just from my curiosity. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I feel relatively comfortable moving this forward in the manner provided. I, um, certainly, uh, understanding of, uh, council's desire, if we so chose, to bring this back to a study session prior to bringing this back forward, I think is the alternative that's being proposed through this motion, uh, through January sixteenth. Um, you know, I think it's really important that we evaluate fees and costs often to try to recoup as much of our administrative costs as possible while also remaining competitive. Um, and a lot of times, we're not near, anywhere near approaching a hundred percent of recouping. But to Councilmember Questa's comments, I think, uh, we need a more regular review schedule, um, as many of these has been, uh, very a long time before we've taken a look at these. And so, I think, uh, moving forward, uh, there should be a more, uh, regular process whereby we're reviewing these, even if the determination is to leave them exactly as is. That way, the comfortable, or the council can feel a little more comfortable, um, with that process and understanding the nature of some of these fees. Um, but again, um, knowing that, you know, taking a look at this list, I don't view them as any of them really out of line. Most of these are very small fees in the grand scheme of the economic activity that's accompanying these, these, uh, these fees. Uh, so again, I'm comfortable moving this forward, but I'm, I'm willing to defer to the, uh, rest of council. Further comments on the motion to table to January sixteenth? Councilmember Martinez?
I'm also comfortable moving forward, but if other council members would like more time, I would be supportive of that as well.
Um, Councilmember Russell?
Um, actually, I would rather table it, because when I, and maybe this is just the paper packet, it is not really clear in the paper packet.
Is this...
No, well, the, um, the in, the increases.
It wasn't clear what was increased, is that...
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me what was increased, so I don't know if there is...
Is that the electronic copy? It was highlighted, so probably if it's a paper copy, I'm not sure if you can see. See, I don't even, that's a column that's on, there's this in two sections?
Oh, okay.
Anyway, um, Councilmember Russell, or Mayor Protem, would you conclude comments there? Do you have anything?
Um, no, I, I would rather postpone it.
No, I would rather postpone it. Thank you.
Councilmember Questa?
Last time, promise. So according to the summary, this will, these fee proposals will bring in $271,000. That's 0.5% of our current budget. So if we lose a couple months on it, I don't think it's going to be that great. I would much rather table this, go over these. I really would like to see those figures of what these are costing us versus what we're charging. And if that means that we kick these down the road to January, I don't think my constituents will be in an uproar about that. So I would much rather have a further scope of our costs, our cost structure behind these fees.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
For the record, I'm absolutely comfortable moving forward with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
You said that the entire $271,000 was not necessarily represented here, because some of the other fees were going to be done in another manner.
The Parks and Rec fees are not required to be passed by resolution. The cost of the service is basically what the cost that gets passed on to who's ever using the service. So those fees are set individually by that department.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the discussion. I take it very serious when we are making our community pay more money for the, pay more of their money, and I have to be able to explain it to them, and I need to have that information. So thanks for what you provided.
Thank you. We are somewhat split on this issue, given that we've got six members voting tonight. I do have some concern about this rate structure failing as a whole. Right now, of course, we will be voting first on the motion to continue or table this matter to January 16th. So I'd suggest we vote on that first. However, you know, I'm concerned, I suppose, maybe a question for the city attorney's office regarding a failed motion and the effect of that. If, let's say, both motions were to fail, both the motion to continue or the motion to approve the fee structure, I guess my concern is that if it were to die, that, you know, how would we be re-bringing that forward?
If both motions were to fail, both to table or to approve, then the fee schedule that's been presented shows you that there are already fees set for all of these things. The way it's been presented this evening, you're seeing all of the fees that the city sets by resolution. So these would stay into effect until the city council chose to bring it back. And actually, I believe that the plan behind the fee schedule, because all staff have been working really hard on this for about two and a half months, was whatever date we get this initial fee schedule approved with these few updates and changes, that annually, we bring the fee schedule back at that time. So if that answers it, we can bring this back at any time. These are already set.
Okay. So either, you know, if a motion to table fails, we could re-bring a motion to table at this meeting. If a motion to approve the rate schedule fails, we can bring that rate structure back in January.
Yes.
Thank you. So we are on the motion to table. Maybe we try this once and we'll discuss. So again, we are voting on the motion to continue to January 16th.
To table?
To table or to continue. I just want to try to be clear about sort of some of those terms of art, but basically, we'll pick this issue up January 16th. Further comments on this issue? Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that I am supportive of moving forward, but I've heard from several members that they need more time, so I'm going to support the motion to table at this time.
Thank you.
Do you need me to call the questions?
Yeah, let's please vote then. You know, that being said, you know, I will also support the motion to table and some deference to our new members, get them up to speed on some of this so that we can get this moved forward. I would like to see this be the highest priority item perhaps of this council, knowing that there is a revenue element to this. I understand and I agree with Councilmember Questa. It's probably not a huge number. However, we know we want to move forward on some of these. Let's move those forward. If there are issues that become a little contentious or need some greater level of detail or study, I suggest we separate out some of these issues. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show six eyes.
Thank you. I'd like to move us on to general discussion. Would any council member like to kick us off this evening? Councilmember Martinez, thank you.
I just want to say that I went to the most recent Board of Education meeting, where they saw in their new members, so really excited to continue that partnership with the new group. And also wanted to remind council that there is a groundbreaking ceremony for Maddox Elementary this Wednesday at 2:00. I have a conflict with my primary job, so I will not be able to participate, but I hope that some other members of council are able to make it.
Thank you. Anything further?
No, that's it for me.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Russell?
I just want to thank city staff and for the holiday parade and the Christmas tree lighting and Santa. I was able to take my four-year-old grandson, and we had a great time. And I just, I was really pleased with the attendance. It was a lot better this year, probably for several reasons. You know, the communication and the weather was much nicer, too, but thank you. I think it's, and I agree with Mayor Jefferson, that it really does bring a sense of community to us. And so I just want to thank you all for coming out. I greatly appreciate that. And so I think that's it for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Move us on to Councilmember Wink?
I'd like to thank the city manager and your staff. I've been here three weeks now on council, and I believe I can say without error that each, in each of those meetings, there is recognition and mention of improvement of our city, of a more sophisticated look, of a different type of methodology, of trying to understand how we can move our services to the community forward in a better way than we have previously. And I know it takes tremendous effort, takes a lot of planning, takes a lot of meeting time oftentimes. So I want to thank you for that diligence and for keeping your eye focused on how we can improve. And these improvements aren't small by any means, so thank you for that. I loved the parade. I was on the trolley with Rita and her little grandson and Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Russell and Member Martinez, and loved the entire event. I like it coupled with the tree lighting. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to say so, but small suggestion, maybe in next year, we could start the parade a little bit later and go directly to the tree lighting. Seemed we were standing around a little bit, but generally, a lovely event. I'm glad I was there. Thank you for all that planning.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
I did not have the opportunity to go to the parade, but I did like the tree lighting. Was a nice event. It was very well attended. Just for the future, all of the people on the sides were unable to hear what was going on, so if we could just kind of look at the sound system a little, it kind of just went straight forward. And the people who were actually immediately over to the sides, including the little children who were supposed to come and flip the switch, couldn't actually hear the mayor talking, but somebody got them out there, so that was good. But it was a beautiful event. We'll just get our, so I don't think we actually anticipated there'd be so many people there, and so it was, maybe we could set it up a little so that people could hear. The AUD panel, I would really like to get together with Carol and see if she would. I think you've made a very great suggestion. I think that would be something that maybe we should take a look at doing. I am concerned about the planning and zoning meetings as well, and why so many of them have been canceled. I want to look back just to, I don't even remember what issue I was trying to look for, a member list or something. I don't know, it had something to do with boards and commissions. And I was like, they're not meeting, and they're in our charter. And I know that Mayor Protem Russell has brought this issue up before, but we need to know why a memo went out from staff saying that they don't have the time, that these meetings are being canceled when we have some very contentious and, you know, a lot of people interested in what's going on with, what's happening with planning and zoning, and we need to make sure that we're on top of that. So if the city manager will go ahead and provide that, I don't expect you to give an answer now. That's fine. I have a District 3 coffee Friday at 11:30 at Duffy Roll. I would, some questions have come up on some of the issues that have gone on with the city, and I really want to address how we're going to go ahead and bring everybody kind of up to speed, including that all of the council members need to be notified on some of these issues as well, because I'm not sure that all of council, previous or present, is being aware of all of what's going on. One of the, and I'll go through them just bullet point to save some time, anything that's leading to a dismissal or replacement of an employee on administrative leave, any of the lawsuits or the potential litigations. I think people sit here and hear comments being made to, like Kathleen Bailey, well, we're not going to make a comment, you know, so we do need to have some kind of update on what's going on with any of the potential lawsuits or litigation, for example, like IBAC or Studio 420, whatever they're being called now, the water sludge, the sex offender residency restrictions, the current court case on the sex offender registry, where Judge Major's decision was based a lot on what a council member said. So we need to make sure that we're getting people up to date. The status of the requested forensic audit of the Inglewood Environmental Foundation and the Inglewood McClellan Reservoir Foundation, and why those were requested, and the previous handing over those books to the district attorney, the wastewater treatment plant, the RFP procurement and policy issues that have happened that led to an employee being put on administrative leave and me being called in to talk to an investigator. I think that needs, we need to make sure that all of council is getting updated on that and that everybody knows what's going on, so that it never appears as if one council member is either driving something or having more information than anybody else. So if we could kind of get, those are just a few of the things. If we could kind of get some kind of laundry list of kind of things that could impact this council, so that none of these people, especially the new council members, are ever blindsided by something or end up in a conversation not realizing the history of what's gone on. So I know that our city attorney would probably be looking at that, but if we could get that addressed, I'd appreciate it. And then the weekend, I took another weekend late-night walk on Broadway, and I would like to get an update on the hotels. Again, I had some interesting conversations with people who are usually up later on Saturday night than I am, out on Broadway and Lincoln and Colma. And I believe that there are some concerns with a couple of the hotels and motels, and they're in my area of town, and they affect both the residents and the people who have to rely on those facilities. So if we could get an update on what's going on with that, maybe a little history for some of the previous people, I mean, for the new people. I apologize, it's a little late. I've been up, I know we all have. And unfortunately, one more issue. I do appreciate what Elaine and what Kathleen brought up, and I am uncomfortable, as I was that night, in the previous council making a motion and a decision to bypass our policies and procedures and change the way that this meeting is done. And while I am open to having a discussion on any kind of telephonic participation in a meeting, it needs to be done as a discussion. We cannot have any one council member, cannot direct staff to go ahead and change the way that we're doing things, whether it's protocol or the tradition, the way that we've done it, whether it's the charter. It needs to be done in a process, and it should not have been done by people in the 11th hour who were part of, who were not re-elected, who were not being looked at by the community to further represent or have that kind of impact on this council. And I would like to have the discussion, but I do not like it weighted over our head that that motion and that vote from the previous council should not bind this current council. I would like to go into the discussion openly and vet it and not have it be, as it never was to me, any kind of personal issue, but I serve the city and the community here. It is not for my convenience that I follow the rules and the laws here. So I would like to make a motion that we no longer have the, I would like to undo the motion that was done before so that we can open ourselves up and have a robust discussion about how we're going to conduct our meetings and the unintended consequences or concerns or how we're going to address it. I would like to not allow any kind of telephonic or other process for this city, for the city council meeting until we've had an opportunity to vet it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. For clarity, does that participation include regular meetings and study sessions, or is that simply regular meeting voting action that you're trying to prohibit?
Voting action. We have always, we have for a long time, allowed people to listen in, study sessions, no decision legally can be made in a study session, so there is no problem with that. What I had a concern with is changing something where the decision that's being made binds this community and can become law, and we were changing that. So yes, a voting situation.
Comments from council, please? Councilmember Questa, did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I will, and then it comes back to me on council.
Yep, and then I'll come back to you on choice.
I'm happy to vote on this motion tonight. I do think it's a procedure that already was going to come up in the coming weeks as it is. I think that it's something that does deserve a fair amount of thought and input from citizens and then consideration from council. At the same time, as we might remove it tonight, I think that it is 2017, quickly approaching 2018, and people participate in things by various different means in these modern times. But again, that should be thoughtful and it should be deliberate. So we can vote on it tonight, but it is something I think should be reviewed at length, and everybody should. Will this happen with six council members, or will this happen with seven then?
Which discussion?
Excuse me. The discussion regarding telephone participation or Skype participation?
I think that's going to begin without that seventh member, but keep in mind, we have me still. I am the seventh member until I leave, so we will have a full for that conversation, but it won't be the new representative from District.
And that's kind of another component, too. I feel like a lot of things are in flux, and we're making decisions now, where we are going to have a different dynamic, and you will be missed, of course, good sir, but there will be a different dynamic six weeks from now.
But I think the direction is to begin that conversation with this body as currently constructed. Whether or not the vote on, you know, the policy would happen prior or post the new District 1 representative, I'm a little unclear on, just given whether it'll happen on the, I'm guessing on the 16th. I'm guessing it's going to be the voting of any policy change on that level will probably happen with the new member, would be my guess. If that's helpful at all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we're already slated to talk about this, and the telephonic piece is going to be one portion of our policies. And when was that date?
Next week. It was beginning, and then we're following up with the following week, so it's really a two-week kind of discussion item.
So I would prefer to wait and just have the full picture discussion through our process that we already have in place.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I, I'm looking forward to the discussion also. I do believe it's something that we need to visit as an entire council, but I do agree that there were two council members that were not voted back in, and they made a motion the very last night they were here to change fundamentally the way we do things. And I do believe that we should remove that and then go forward from here. And if this council decides that's what they want, after thoughtful discussion, I think that's a great idea, but I just think it was an unwise decision to make that night.
I do think there are, you know, probably two meetings, you know, we're going to discuss here in a moment scheduling on the 18th and whether or not we have a regular meeting on that day. Of course, we have the second, you know, prior to the 16th meeting, where I'm thinking this might be coming forward, so I suppose there could be some clarity provided. Again, my preference, just like Councilmember Martinez, is probably to wait. I think we've got a whole host of issues. I think this motion in and of itself will force this council to have a little bit more drawn-out conversation, and I don't think that it will have the benefit of presentation or, you know, some best practices type of conversation. Councilmember Berentone?
I am concerned that it seems to be kind of melding, this conversation seems to be melding itself around representation and that we won't have all seven people there. The charter already addresses that by allowing a quorum to be five people, with the understanding that occasionally people can't attend. If we go to a model where we expect that if, that a full participation, then we should make the quorum seven, and if nobody is, and if one person maybe doesn't like a vote going to go that way, or is ill, or something happens, then we don't have a meeting. But it already addresses not having some people there all the time, and that's why five is a quorum and not seven. So I... there all the time. And that's why five is a quorum and not seven. So I think that the kind of blindsided way that it happened with not a discussion with this council, not a public discussion, so that the public knew what was going on, and it just being put on the agenda by one council member is not our policy. We cannot have any one council member directing staff and changing the way we do meetings or our policies and protocols, especially when there is a legitimate conversation to be had on the charter. I would like to clear the table again, go back to the way we had it before, and then have the discussion and be honest and upfront with each other and just put it on the table of how we want to have things run, whether we think it's a technology thing and an advancement. But we need to have the discussion on the unintended consequences, which we saw very clearly both in the study session, which doesn't matter as much because there's not a vote. But we clearly saw the technology is not all it's cracked up to be sometimes, and the problems and disruptions that it causes. There were unintended consequences. So I would just like to go back so we don't have to worry about that hanging over our head and then have a professional representative discussion about changing something that drastic in the community.
Further comments? You know, knowing that I'm kind of in a transitional mode, I'm open to deferring to some of the new members or, you know, members who are going to stick with this council on how they want to define this policy if we're trying to define that here at 9:30. Councilmember Martinez?
I will not be supporting this motion at this time, only because I want us to have a more in-depth, robust conversation about all of the policies and not just this one item in the next two weeks.
Thank you. Others want to comment? Councilmember Berentone?
Well, it doesn't change anything. I mean, I appreciate your desire at this point to have a robust conversation. I wish we had had that robust conversation before that decision got made, and we had that kind of upheaval at a time that should have been a little bit more celebratory for everybody. So I don't think that we take away anything by allowing this, but I appreciate the position you feel you've been put in. And in no way, shape, or form was this ever personal for me to bring this up. I realize that it was, I realize that you wanted to be able to participate, but I don't want to do policies and procedures on situational issues going on. I don't think that's, I don't think it's good law. I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good way to proceed. So I'll call the question.
Okay. Let's see. No further comments. The question has been called. You know, I guess I'm going to, I'm voting no.
Will you please, will you restate the question?
Yeah, the question is, the motion basically is to not allow telephonic voting and clarify that in our policy. Is that a fair restatement, ma'am?
Just to correct. No, not to put it in our policy. I didn't say put it in the policy. I just said, just to go back to exactly what we had before, I am not making a policy decision tonight, either way. I want, I said very clearly, I want to have the discussion. I just don't want it allowed at this point so that we can go ahead and talk about it with all of our other policies and procedures, because it's going to affect the way that we do other liaison issues. It's going to affect this, going down this path is opening up the door for redefining a lot of words, present, attendance, participation. We can go down this road quite a bit, and there are some very serious issues that are facing us with some of our boards and commissions and in our policies that are going to be addressed with this. And I want them all done at one time without this hanging over our head with the decision the way it was made. I think I've made that pretty clear.
You know, I think part of the concern and, you know, maybe is just, you know, if I, if it were that easy to reset it to where I thought we were, then I feel like I could support that. But I feel like the issue of where we were was somewhat questionable, and that's how we ended up in this spot with an undefined policy. I understand some argue that a precedent should carry the weight. I understand some people argue that written policies and rules should carry weight. Again, I'm open to some further discussion. Councilmember Berentone, I'd suggest, you know, maybe allowing some additional conversations. I think this is a difficult decision, I think, for the body to reach here. I don't know what your thoughts are there, but it is your motion. Further comments, anyone? Councilmember Russell?
Actually, I believe by going back and resetting this, it would open it for more honest, open conversation between council members. This policy was not here in place before. It didn't get us to this point. This point was gotten to because one person, and probably not just one person. I was gone for two weeks last February because we had a family emergency. I sat in my daughter's dining room watching the council member, or watching the council meeting. I did not feel that I could participate. That was the rule at that time. And it wasn't that I couldn't be gone, I could be gone. My family is the most important thing to me when they need me. But I, and we, I had this discussion with my daughter. If you need me, I will step down from council. But when we make choices to take vacation or whatever, we, and we're not here, Councilmember Berentone is absolutely correct. A quorum is five people. We can move on. I believe that we should have this conversation. And, you know, I don't really want to go really late tonight, but if this is voted down, there are a lot of unintended consequences that we need to discuss as a body. I mean, I have talked to people. Telecommunications is not always what it's cracked up to be. I talked to a person that's out of the country a lot, and this person told me that when they're on phone conversations, they only hear 25% of the conversation. It's not fair for us to sit here. There are seven of us. We all need to input. If that person sitting on the phone is only getting 25% of the conversation, then it's not fair to our constituents to have the representation. And so I am not against discussing this matter. I believe that we should go back and reset to where we were before, and then when we move forward with the policy discussion, we can address this then. And I don't have an issue with addressing it. But I do agree that it was brought up without discussing it before, and we were forced into that position. And so I will be voting to rescind that policy that was instituted.
You know, I would encourage council to probably think of this as somewhat of a temporary placeholder until we get to this further deep discussion. And if we could get some unity and buy-in on that, I, you know, I'd love to see us kind of move forward together on this so that we can begin that conversation in a constructive manner. Councilmember Berentone?
I appreciate that Councilmember Olson did not avail herself of that motion tonight. She is out of, obviously not here, and could have gone ahead and phoned in, obviously with the problems that happened before. I believe that she probably made a wise decision to not do that. And I think that we shouldn't have that hang over our head until we have an opportunity to vet this. One of the other issues was the way that it was brought up and to the public and the conversations that people have had with me. And the concern they have is that a decision was made behind the public's back, that this wasn't a discussion that the council had. It wasn't buy-in, obviously, but it was obvious that there were council members who were talked to prior to the meeting, and that this was all set up, that it was put on the agenda, that there was a lot going on that council did not do as a body. And I don't want to set a precedent of doing that, even if you think that you have a, you know, you have a right, but it was never stated. It at least needs to be vetted and have the conversation. And the way that this went down did not look good to the public and doesn't, it doesn't fare well for, for us handling procedures. It kind of makes it look that as long as you're in the majority voting block, that you can interpret as you wish and do as you wish, and it isn't a good policy to set. And I had some very serious conversations with people who disagree with me on a lot of issues, but what they do agree with is that we all should follow the rules and we should all go ahead regardless of whether we're in the minority voting block or the majority voting block, though we can't just run roughshod over our charter or the rules or our process or tradition.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
I'm probably going to support the question to hit the reset button, take it back. And that's mainly because it was done hastily a couple of weeks ago. And one of the problems for me is just that we haven't fleshed out how this should be executed if we move forward with it. Who initiates the call? Is it just telephonic? Could be Skype as well. I think there were much more details to be worked out. Truth be told, I, I could lean towards the idea of remote voting, but I think it does need more thought. I also want to be very careful in vilifying any particular members of council. We are all friends here, and we all need to get to the end goal. So I don't think any one particular person should be made to feel bad about this. Any one of us could be sick at any one time. Mayor Protem, you just described a situation in which you had to be remote, would have liked to have participated. That might have been ideal there, a situation where you could have used it as well. So I think there might be opportunities where council members could take advantage of this. I am happy to hit the reset button as well, really flesh out the policy. If council decides to go with it, everybody can weigh in, but I will be supporting the question tonight.
On board with that. Can others get on board with that perhaps? I'd love to move us all forward together to begin this conversation rather than making this another contentious political issue for us. Councilmember Wink?
Let us move forward with that.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comments. Again, the Councilmember Martinez, one last comment?
I will support this moving forward if we don't talk about it anymore tonight and can talk about it in our formal policy discussion that we have already planned to have.
War down. Thank you for that. Councilmember Berentone, did you have a final comment?
Aside from calling the question, please hear me. I appreciate what Councilmember Questa said. This is not on any individual council person. It was never, and not personal, and I've tried to make that very clear. And then I'd like to just call the question.
Thank you all. I think it makes sense to get us in a good spot where we can all have some agreement over the next couple of meetings, what the, what the situation is, and we can have a lot more in-depth conversation moving forward. Seeing no further comments, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show six ayes.
Councilmember Berentone, back to you for the remainder of your choice.
I greatly appreciate everybody considering the question. The rest of what I had, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Berentone did lead into one of my first issues, which is water. I know that the prior council had made, it seemed a pretty binding agreement that they would not speak to issues that were brought in front of us. I do not feel that I have agreed to that yet. I would like to hear the details of it. I do consider myself free to speak on such matters. I have had several neighbors bring up water with me just within the past few weeks. The Allen Water Filtration Plant is in my backyard. It's a block away. I see Ms. Bailey very frequently. She's in the neighborhood as well. Again, I've had some very recent concerns regarding, and not just a larger issue regarding the sludge, but more just, I think, minor day-to-day issues. And Mr. Keck, I really appreciate that you facilitate all our contact with staff that operates beneath you. And I was hoping that maybe you could make some contacts for me. And again, I'm happy to, you know, we can do this through email or you CC all these things, but I would like to get a better understanding of just the water plant, some of the issues that arise, even just basic odors that exist for a few days. That happened this past week. I get calls on it, and I really want to be able to give people an educated explanation on what's going on there. And then, of course, the larger issue with the pending lawsuit. I would like to know exactly what council's current stance is, and I think maybe we should all discuss again. Are we all remaining silent on this?
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see. Did everybody get choice? Councilmember Wink, did we switch, skip you? Okay, great. We'll move on to Councilmember Russell. Did you have a comment here?
Actually, I have one thing that I wanted to bring up that I forgot.
Go ahead.
And that was the holiday dinner or the Christmas dinner that we usually have. And I just, I really appreciate this council, and I really appreciate the demeanor and the relationship between us. And I really feel like it would be a great thing and a team-building thing for us to go to dinner together next, actually, it would be on the 18th, I believe. That's, that's the date. And so, I mean, when we talked at the mayor manager meeting, we couldn't remember what the consensus was. I felt by the time we got to that point, it was pretty silent. But, so I hope you've had some time to think about that. And I just think it would be a great thing for us to do. And, you know, Amy and myself and Lorette came on council at the same time, and it was just a couple months after we got on council, well, really, only a month, the very first time we went to the Christmas dinner. And it just kind of helped me gel with the people that were on council. And so I would like to see us move forward with that.
Yeah, we'll take some comments on the holiday dinner. I think the suggestion then from the mayor Protem as well as me is the, that we start the holiday dinner at 5:30 till 6:45, and then we begin our study session at 7:00 PM with Bob. Is that your understanding, Mr. Keck?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentone?
Is it a study session or a business meeting?
It's been proposed to be a meeting wherein you meet with Attorney Bob Widener to discuss rules of, rules of order and specifically council policy.
That is the secondary issue of canceling a regular meeting.
In place of a regular meeting. And that's permissible under the city's charter, wherein it says the council shall meet as they deem fit unless they deem otherwise. And we heard clearly a few, a month or month and a half, two months ago, that you wanted to have a discussion on rules of order. And Mr. Widener, who is the city attorney for Centennial as well as several special districts, has availed himself that evening as he does not have a meeting that night with the city of Centennial. He's a very sought-after commodity right now with all the elections that's transpired, to discuss rules of order with other entities that have wished to engage him.
Other comments?
I will, I will have fun looking at the charter to see about the meeting thing. I never actually looked at that. I don't think in the entire time that I've done that we, I don't know whether we've ever canceled a regular business meeting or not. So, but back to the dinner thing, because, yeah, I was okay with it not, us not doing it, but then I'm always kind of like, give my money to whoever. But I appreciated the mayor and the mayor Protem, whoever sent the email out to council. And you're right. Sometimes I get so bogged down in the rules and what's going on and our policies and whatever, I sooner read the charter sometimes. But you're right. It's important for us to have that team building and to go ahead and, and have those kind of events. They are important. I'm not, you know, anticipating that we should, you know, just go willy-nilly off all the time because I'm always fiscally trying to be responsible. But I really think it is an important event, and I think that it would be nice. I've had that opportunity before, and I would like it for the other councils. So I actually kind of changed my mind after reading you guys' email and, and think that it would be a nice thing for, especially the new council members and the old council members, so that we can all move forward as a team.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, I have a couple thoughts on this. I guess, I mean, I like the fact that we are all going to go out to eat, us together. But I also think it's going to be important for us to have a dinner with the new council member when they come on together as a way to kind of kick us off. So if we have two, I'm fine with that. I also think that the, our Bob's, Bob Widener coming is, we're very fortunate to have him be on our agenda. So thank you for coordinating that. And I don't want to cut that conversation short at all. So I would prefer, if we are going to do a dinner with this council, to maybe not have it on that same night, so it doesn't cut into that very important discussion. In my mind, it's the number one top priority thing that we need to do together is have that discussion. So I would, if we're going to have a dinner together as this council, I would prefer to move it to a different date, maybe a New Year dinner or something like that.
There you go. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. Who pays for the dinner that we would be going out? Who pays for the dinner that we would be going out to?
They do.
And I'm very apprehensive about that, truth be told. On optics alone, it is the holidays and, you know, knocking on doors over the past few months, there's still a lot of folks that, you know, I mean, they struggle to make it around this time of year. And so I personally am not very comfortable. I believe Steakhouse Ten was suggested, which is certainly one of the finer restaurants in Inglewood. If we were going to do it, I would suggest something a little bit more economical. I don't think it's the restaurant, it's the company that would be the most important part. That would be the first component. The second, I'm, and I certainly appreciate the hoops you've jumped through, Mr. Keck, to get Bob to speak with us. I'm very apprehensive about canceling a meeting. That'd be like my fourth meeting on city council and I'd be canceling a meeting. That doesn't make me especially comfortable either. So we would be canceling a meeting or no that evening?
Canceling this.
We've got to have Bob or the regular. Those are mutually exclusive.
Yeah, okay, sure. And that's why I think I would.
The Florida Councilmember Costa here is...
Well, we're still having a meeting.
Yep.
It's still public.
Study session.
Yeah, study session.
So that would not be a regular council meeting that evening? It was just a study session? Okay.
It's being proposed, but, you know, I think you're, you know, charting a potential different path of going back. But again, that would require us to cancel with Bob, in my mind.
I've got the calendar in front of me now. What date is being proposed on this?
Number 18th we're talking about here? That's two Mondays from now?
Okay. I can't support that.
Yeah, okay. So you want to have a regular meeting and reschedule with Bob?
Correct, if we can.
And have the dinner perhaps before the regular meeting at a cheaper venue?
Sure.
That's fair. Thank you. Other comments here? Councilmember Wink?
I believed during our study session last time that, well, we had this conversation about precedence earlier, but I believe that previous council members discussed the fact that they had gone to Steakhouse Ten previously, and it seemed to be maybe an enjoyable setting for council. I'm flexible on where we go, but it seemed that that particular time you enjoyed there meant something to you all and you sort of...
A different place. Oh, they have happened to be at Steakhouse.
I understood it to have been a recurring place. So I'm flexible on that and I'm absolutely, I would love it if we could not reschedule with Bob Widener.
Thank you.
Proceed with the 18th.
Councilmember Russell?
I am okay with choosing a different place. The first year we got on council, we went to Calori. There are other things. And I know this discussion about, and I absolutely agree with you. I am very fiscally responsible and I, you know, when the Budget Advisory Committee brought up that perhaps we should do away with council dinners, I am okay with that. But the truth is, there are some times that it is beneficial. I think there's other areas we can cut at as council members. But, so I'm okay with a different place. That's fine with me.
Thank you. Are you okay canceling the meeting? Let's start there. Maybe we need to back up to, do you feel comfortable meeting with Bob on the 18th rather than having a regular meeting?
Well, you know...
I can come back to you on that if you want.
No, I'll share with what I was thinking. I'm okay with Bob Widener. I think that we do need to hear from him. I was a little bit concerned when it came up that we were canceling the council meeting and that we had him scheduled. I mean, I just assumed. So, I mean, my, in my reading, it says, you know, two business meeting, I think it says business meetings per month. But I think when they originally wrote the charter, I highly doubt that they had study sessions.
Correct. I think the idea, you know, I don't think that language contemplates the difference between what we call now a regular meeting and a study session. I think they defined it as any sort of notice-posted meeting, if that's fair.
Right. So I am, I mean, I really, I want to meet with Bob Widener, but I really do feel uncomfortable with canceling the regular meeting.
Those are mutually exclusive. Do you want me to come back to you? Do you support meeting with Bob on the 18th or having a regular meeting on the 18th? I can come back to you if you'd like.
Come back to me.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Martinez?
Again, I'm strongly opposed to rescheduling Mr. Widener. I think his schedule is pretty set in stone. And I believe you said a couple of meetings ago that he was, we had talked about this months ago, and we had selected this date, and that was the essentially only date he's available.
Correct. Yeah, you would have to have a special meeting on another night or another morning. And I've heard from council that those are difficult to do. And so, yeah, we tried to plan for a long time for this. And actually, when I first started, council did cancel regular business meetings because they interpreted Section 27 of the charter where it says, "Council should meet regularly at the city hall at least twice each month at a day and hour to be fixed from time to time by rules and procedures," to count you've met twice already in the month, both for a study session and a regular meeting. Or in the instance of this time, we've actually been planning for this, we don't have any business items for the 18th right now because we've tried to plan ahead to have things tonight or on the 2nd of January. So that's just something else to contemplate.
Thank you. Again, I am strongly in favor of keeping Mr. Widener on our schedule, study session only for the 18th. I think it's our top priority at this time.
I'll support sticking with Bob as well. Councilmember Berantine?
I don't have a problem with that. And we always switched it around. We don't have to go to Steakhouse Ten. I don't, I agree with you. It is the company. It is not where we're at. But I do think it's an important tradition and I'm not going to be a Grinch on the dinner. So...
I'm going to suggest...
I think we have plenty of time to go ahead, and if we go from 5:30 to 6:45, that that's plenty of time if we meet at the restaurant. We have always had, that's about how much time we can all stand having Thanksgiving dinner with our families. Come on. Well, get along for, and, you know, have a meal and share a little time. I think it's important that it is not here, that we have that, that's the one time that we kind of do that where it's not a meeting. So if, I think that's plenty of time, 6:45, we could still have him and do this. So I don't understand why, I mean, we can still do both and just come and do the meeting with him. That would be fine.
I'm going to suggest that we kind of have consensus here at this time to cancel the meeting on the 18th, meet with Bob, have dinner at 5:30 to 5:45, begin with Bob at 7:00 in a study session format. And I'll suggest that we go to a different restaurant besides Steakhouse Ten. We'll work and try to figure out some venue options on that. Do members have comments based on that? Councilmember Costa?
And I'm clearly seeing the numbers are not on my side here, but I do not agree to canceling the meeting on the 18th, just to be on the record stating that.
Thank you.
Nor do I think Bob is our highest priority. We have far higher priorities than that, just for the record.
I'm glad we're not setting a precedent, though. Somebody else did.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
And, you know, I'm okay with having Mr. Widener on the 18th and also going to dinner. I think both are important.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to mayor's choice. You know, just wanted to give a real brief thank you again. We've kind of beat this horse pretty good with the holiday parade and the Christmas tree lighting, really a wonderful event. You know, again, I highlight always that I think it's events like that that really create that sense of community, particularly in the holiday season, particularly important. We got really lucky with the weather, of course, as we've gotten lucky all year with a lot of our special events, so thank goodness for that. But, you know, this is only the second year where we've combined the parade event and the tree lighting event. We did attempt, I think, to plug that gap, if you will, between the end of the parade and the beginning of the tree lighting by providing vendors around the circle. Thank you to the Guild for cooperating and providing a Santa Claus workshop. Folks were able to go in there and write letters to Santa. Really beautiful. I do think there was probably a little bit of lack of understanding about what that, what opportunities may be around the city center during that break between the parade and the Christmas tree lighting. So I think next year, we need to either shorten that up or we need to make sure that people are aware of what some of the options are at that time. There were tons of local businesses giving away free prizes and all sorts of fun stuff if you just kind of walked around the circle. And so hopefully, we can kind of tighten that up and make it an even better event next year. I did want to suggest to the council that I will be announcing just in a moment here, a special meeting on January 8th at 6:00 PM. My suggestion is that that special meeting would run from 6:00 PM till 6:30 PM, and that the study session would begin at 6:30 PM that night. The special meeting would be for the swearing-in of the judge and what happened in this room here in the regular council chambers. I would suggest that, you know, we would have a pre-reception that would begin at about 5:30. Anybody from the public or would be welcome to attend that. And then the council could spend about half an hour there at that event and then move forward the study session that evening. I guess I just wanted to gauge, is there any major allergic reactions to that?
Second.
Excuse me? Okay. I don't think I need a motion. I think I'm just announcing it, but I wanted to give the council in case there was an allergic reaction to that.
Second.
Thank you. Seeing nobody jumping or running, again, I will then hereby announce that special meeting on January 8th, 6:00 to 6:30.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Very nice.
And I believe I did just have, just wanted to give a couple of updates. You know, I do have that Maddox grand opening on my schedule. Please feel free to join us over there for Maddox. There's also, on that same day at 10:00 AM, I believe the ribbon cutting's happening at 10:15 AM at Elite Hail Solutions on West Dartmouth Avenue through the chamber. Let's see, what else do we got going? And those are the only events I wanted to highlight this week. City manager's choice.
Thank you, mayor. Several things tonight. We should have had gone out already. I think it's going to go out tomorrow. We've been talking about this. I think I mentioned it two weeks ago, the police building groundbreaking Tuesday, the 12th. For some reason, I can't get my calendar to work here, at 1:00 PM is the groundbreaking.
Thank you.
So we'll be sending out an email about that, advertising that for the public as well, and putting that on the city's website.
Sorry for interrupting, but while people have their calendars out, that same day, December 12th, is the Chamber Christmas party that starts at 6:00 PM at the Inglewood Elks Club. You did get something in your box today asking you to RSVP. We have a table, free. We'll take care of your admission. Just let the city know, please.
Oh, nice.
I was going to mention that next, so thank you.
Okay, perfect. I had that online when I forgot. Go ahead.
You're fine. I know this evening also was mentioned that the predominance, or the prominence, I should say, of the accessory dwelling unit material, that has been on our landing page, the front page under news, one week after the open house. The results, the staff did the results of the survey, and that document's been on the website, still is there under events. I did notice another thing that we want to take off the website, it's the newsletter with the candidate bios. We don't need that anymore because candidates are now elected, so we...
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, you bet. We'll remove that.
No, I mean, not the candidate thing.
Oh.
I wasn't saying that. No, thank you for making that information as accessible as possible. If there would be even a link on the front page to that, I would greatly appreciate it. But I know that, I know there was some accessibility, so I do appreciate that you've made that effort. Thank you.
And the spotlight, we would have put it in the spotlight, but we had to move the spotlight to highlight the Holiday Express. The Inglewood Holiday Express is December 8th and 9th, and then the 15th and 16th from 3:30 to 8:00 PM. Tickets have been selling briskly. So if you haven't purchased your tickets yet, I would recommend you doing that. And you're probably going to have to look at the 15th and 16th because I think the 8th and 9th might be sold out, maybe. Just to gain some clarity, there were several things that were brought up tonight. Councilmember Berantine, you had a laundry list. Can I ask that you email that to me?
Sure. I mean, I was just trying to, I think, make the point that we really have a lot for people to wrap their heads around, and sometimes people can forget. And then all of a sudden, somebody comes and an issue gets brought up, and I don't want anybody feeling like they're blindsided on anything because they will come up again. They always do. So I will do that for you.
Thank you. And just understand too, just so the public understands, I mean, we do our due diligence and best effort to make sure that what one council member gets, all council member gets. That's just, that's a policy I've lived by since day one.
And so, and you do that very well, but sometimes it just happens as a matter of the synergy of the issue. Just like when I got called by the investigator to talk about the wastewater treatment and plan employee, I was kind of surprised. So, I mean, and then I wasn't sure, am I supposed to talk to people about it? Where are we sit with that? So even I was a little confused. I mean, especially when somebody goes, "You initiated it." I did not, I did not. So, I mean, just to have, bring back, just to kind of remember. But I think you do a beautiful job of trying to make sure that everybody is treated fairly and gets all of the information together. Please trust me, I wasn't even trying to insinuate that. I just was trying, actually, the opposite, to point out that there is such a plethora of issues that have happened, even in the two years I've been on, that to even go back and remember, it's like going, I can't remember what I had for breakfast. I mean, the issues that were important, that were packing this house six months ago, that's not the issues we're dealing with now, but those issues may come back again. So that's, and just like when you were talking about the water. So just, just to kind of get an update and bring everybody up, and I will bring up the things that I can remember, and I'm sure other people can remember some too, so.
Okay.
What I had down as a note was litigation exec session update, I think is going to hit a lot of those issues that were laundry listed out. And I do think the new council members need the benefit of some of that information and discussion in exec session.
Well, again, we want to be as focused as possible too.